And Colonel Noble, could I please ask you to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I had a feeling you'd bring some wingmen with you.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. As you know, this Saturday, November the 11th, is Veterans Day. It is a time when we pause as a nation to remember the brave men and women who have answered the call of duty to preserve the freedoms that we all enjoy in this country. The City of Dublin will observe Veterans Day next Monday, November the 13th, at the grounds of remembrance in order to have the, and I believe it was Colonel Noble's request, that it be done so that the kids from Sells Middle School, who bring, all the kids come down and the band comes down, and it's quite a, it's quite a moving tribute, and they're not in school on Friday. So, we will observe this on Monday, November the 13th, so that the Sells Middle School children can join the ceremony at the grounds of remembrance. Colonel Noble is the commander of the Wesley G. Davis American Legion Post 800, is that correct? And here with him is, he can, he will, I'm sure, in a moment here, share more about the ceremony. Before I turn it over to you, Colonel, I do have a proclamation I would like to share. Whereas an act of Congress in 1954 established November 11th as Veterans Day, a day set aside to publicly thank, honor, and acknowledge the contributions of nearly 20 million veterans in the United States. And whereas this year's official Veterans Day poster features a quote from Abraham Lincoln, which is also the mission statement for the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, "To care for Him who shall have borne the battle." And whereas the quote is from Lincoln's second inaugural address, in which he says, "With malice towards none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for Him who shall have borne the battle, and for His widow and His orphan, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." And whereas Americans veterans have suffered the hardships of war through their brave and selfless acts, including the 900,000 Ohio veterans who have answered the call to serve and to protect our freedoms. And whereas on Veterans Day, and every day, it is important that we pay tribute to these brave men and women who are, who are our country's heroes. And whereas the City of Dublin, VFW Post 10691, and the Wesley G. Davis American Legion Post 800 invite veterans and their families to a breakfast hosted by the Shadow Lane in historic Dublin, and the public ceremony to follow at the grounds of remembrance, I believe we just walk right up from there, don't we, Colonel? At the Dublin Veterans Park on Monday, November the 13th, at 11:00 a.m., for a time of recognition and remembrance. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of all of Dublin City Council, to hereby proclaim the week of November 6th through the 11th as Veterans Week in the City of Dublin, Ohio, urging all citizens to recognize the sacrifices made by our veterans, and preserving our freedoms, and encouraging all citizens to display the U.S. flag, and to participate in patriotic activities throughout the week. Signed, this 8th day of November, 2017. And as, it is extremely important, we recognize these special occasions, every single day should be an occasion that we recognize the sacrifices that you people have made for us. So, thank you very much.[233.62][233.62](applause)
We want to invite you all to join us. It's actually a good event. The kids are great. They got 80 band kids in Sells Middle School, who'd have thunk it. But they play very well, play very hard. We incorporate some of the kids in the ceremony, and the veterans pretty much take it easy on this day. Please come and join us, and thank you for this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Colonel. Appreciate you guys being here.[276.83][276.83](applause) Also, Mayor Monahan from Shawnee Hills, welcome. Thank you for coming. Congratulations. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate your service. Okay, citizen comments. Tom Holden? Tom? Did you, were you going to comment on the...
West Innovation.
West Innovation? Okay, so something on the agenda. Okay. How about Bill, is it Westbrook?
Also, West.
Same thing? Okay.
I think it's Steve Rudy who wants to speak.
All right. So, Steve, go on up. And I think you wanted to comment on the historic district, but that's on later in the agenda, and you have some time situation, so come on up.
My twins are here, and I don't know who to ask, so...
Okay, well, (laugh) absolutely.
Appreciate the chance to go early.
Sure.
Steve Rudy, 129 South River View. And those guys took off. I was going to say, thanks for your service. I can say it to you, Representative of the gang that just headed out the door, probably some more around, but, so hopefully, you've got a huge agenda. Hopefully, it doesn't get too slurred up here. So, looking way down your agenda, at whatever that case number is I wrote down, so we're looking at Bridge Street District Historic Court II, right?
Yeah.
Or some, whatever it's now called. So, just a few notes, and I don't have my voice back from a couple tough weeks of cold flu. I'm not contagious, but I am hindered, so hopefully not too badly. So, the first thing I want to say is, please, please, keep and enforce the guidelines in the historic district. We all signed on. They are a really good sanity check for projects, and we've lived by them for decades. And I think some of the things that we've seen go through the mill here would be a little more toned down if those were enforced. So, regarding the specific parameters, I would just throw in again, because I don't see it really articulated anywhere, except in that, the historic Dublin guidelines and the ARB code that empowers them to ensure, or, you know, whatever model's being put forth, maximize separation of uses. So, like, right now, it's totally a backyard neighborhood. You've got principal structures, lots of backyard, some of that backyard is parking, some of it's just wide open. I really think if you don't want to lose the charm of the district, that separation is one of the biggest single parameters that's got to be cut. So, I'm a little worried when I see allowances for bringing things down the hill, or even maybe some suggestions that the model of infill is to fill down one side and stick parking in a corner. I really think parking ought to be at the back, and that'll leave that separation, that leaves sightlines, topography, all kinds of really good things that actually do achieve charm in the district, where you can stand there and, you know, it's permeability. The other bits here, I'll just say, you know, that I've been asked, and it's hard to boil it down, but I think what I just mentioned, the district as a whole needs those things to stay the district, to keep charming. And I think it's axiomatic. Everybody in the room thinks we ought to keep the historic inventory standing, right? So, I won't even mention that. We all believe we should be incentivizing that these things aren't left to rot. I've done my part. I have one of them, and I've poured ridiculous amounts of money into keeping the Brelsford Sees House up, and keeping the Carpenter Anset Bay. But beyond that, that's what the district needs. Now, the residents, so I will say, the residents are going to benefit too from separation of uses, but the one thing, I mean, there's a lot of pressure here on when do the bar is going to close, right? And I thought, okay, what, what am I really worried about? I think if my kids can sleep with their windows open in the summer, it's a success. That's all I need. If the, if the windows can be open, and the summer breeze coming through, and we can sleep, I don't care when the bars close. Okay? I know there's a lot of pressure, there's people who are counting money and figuring out, okay, what's our profit margin going to be if we're closing at 10, or 11, or 12? And, so I know you guys are under pressure to allow bars to be open late, but that's what we need. We need to sleep with our windows open. And so, just to close it out, because sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words, I'll say again and again, the large infill model that I think was optimal was Coratola Diddy's Number Two. It's the one before the one that was approved, because it was oriented with lots of rear yard space, and left all the topography and sightlines intact. It was, I think, the position for a building like that. And what was encouraging about that is it not only was really good for us, we assume the numbers worked for the applicant, because he proposed it. We assumed it would have been economically successful, which is what we keep qualitatively hearing the worry about. Well, there was a very quantifiable apparent success that was turned down by the ARB, and something much worse for the neighbors, and much less charming, was approved about two months later. So, the small infill project, unfortunately, is still a theoretical thing, but it is in the books, so you can look it up, is J. Lou's plan for 3032 South High. So, if you wonder, wonder what Rudy and the residents would like for small infill, that was bullseye. It was completely integrated with scale and character of the historic structures. It dramatically improved parking, and didn't come down the hill, it kept the separation. It was a fabulous proposal. And every time I see J. Lou, I say, build it. Please, build it. So, those are the two. They really do exist. I'm not pie in the sky here. There are two really good proposals that should be the model. So, thanks for your time.
Great. Thanks a lot, Steve. We appreciate you coming in. Any other, nobody else signed up for citizen comments? Citizen comments are usually reserved for items that are not on the agenda, and if someone wants to speak and they didn't get an opportunity to sign up, please just raise your hand and let me know, and we'll bring you up. Otherwise, we will keep moving on. The consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove either of those two items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will make a motion that we approve the two items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mr. Luckleyter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Ludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Amoros-Grooms.
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinance is 69-17. Anne?
This is adopting the updated West Innovation District Special Area Plan as part of the City of Dublin Community Plan.
Jenny?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We had some, any updates are included within your memo. There was some discussion, which we then tried to address in the memo, and had one clerical error that has been revised and is included in your, in your packet tonight. So, unless you have any other questions, we're...
Any questions for, from council for Jenny at this point, before we hear any testimony?
We'll wait for testimony.
Wait, yeah, that's what I figured what we would do. Tom. Tom Holden.
Tom.
Mr. Holden. Tom, you're up.
Thank you. Tom Holden, 5957 Roundstone Place. I live in the Ballantrey Development, which is City of Dublin and Hilliard Schools. I've talked to a few neighbors about the, the West Innovation District, and they, they didn't know about it, which is an indication of this sort of split personality of the, of that development. The planning department has a good explanation of the Innovation District and the city website, and a place for readers to comment. However, when an individual submits a comment, we don't wonder what happens to it. If there were a public forum after the community has had an opportunity to read and absorb the information, the public can comment in a, in an open forum, then share ideas and build on one another's comments and ideas. The West Innovation District appears to be already designed and laid out, particularly with the part which I interpret as a, a small city portion represented into what I call the fly-through animation. There seems to be no invitation for public comment any longer. That would be unfortunate, considering what appears to be considerable traffic impact. And I wonder if there's any consideration of public input that could change that design. And I wonder, what is the projected population increase for this district, and will TIFs be offered to developers? If they're offered as a projected, does this will have a negative impact on the township services budget? So, the township will have to either ask for a tax increase, or charge more for EMS services, or both. I never thought I'd be talking like one of the last opponents at the wall, railing against the oncoming earth movers, right, right across the street practically from me, but I felt someone must speak up and ask, why are we doing this? Or someone must say, stop or slow down. Someone must ask, what, what's the hurry? It's greener in Dublin, once was the slogan for the city. However, we seem to be replacing a lot of green environment with development, or more and more with development. We're putting more buildings, traffic, and people into an existing outer ring of roads and highways, like Bridge Park, or perhaps possibly creating another traffic problem. Idling cars are not very green. Most people I know are a strong supporter for the historic, know that I'm a strong supporter of the historic district, where I pay a lot of time and attention, but for reasons not easy to explain. An agricultural piece of my heart rose to the surface recently. My grandfather owned two farms in Madison County, and even though we lived in town in London, he was firm that my sisters and I knew something about farm life, and every summer, he wanted us to know where our food came from, and so he took us to the hog farm on Route 38, and the corn farm near Madison South High School, and I'm a small-town kid at heart. Our next-door neighbor in London raised corn and chickens, but now my attention is drawn to the west of Dublin within sight of where I live. I admire our farm industry, and I see corn, when I see corn and soybean fields outside of Dublin yield to bulldozers and other heavy equipment, it means one more piece of our past is gone forever. We can't build more farmland. Yet Dublin will remove something, will remove some of that farmland with the current plans, and something seems wrong with that. If it's, if it is still greener in Dublin in some way, drawing on that slogan once again, then considering the West Innovation District, twice scrape away plants and trees that clean the air, replacing them with roadways and rooftops, and untold polluting vehicles. I'm not against the plan. I'm not in favor of the scope, or the size, or the speed of the plan. I suggest rethinking this. Whose vision is it, or was it planners, planners, or the community? If it was the vision five years ago, could it change under circumstances today? For example, if we were to ask a question about this planned district relative to climate change, climate change impact, for example, which seems to be a priority in people's minds, I wonder what the community would say today? Would they say less pavement, fewer rooftops, fewer cars, and leave some more agriculture? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate you coming in. Bill Westbrook?
I'll be brief. My name's Bill Westbrook. I'm here representing Shepherd Excavating, Sports Ohio, and Steel Land Company. I just wanted to double-check. I've been working with the staff, reviewing those that impact things of those who I'm representing. I have a community plan that's dated October 23rd, 2017. Just wanted to find out if there are any changes that would affect those property owners. That's my question.
So, are you speaking on Sports Ohio?
Yeah.
No, the change, the only change was as a numerical number that has changed. Nothing's changed since you met with Tammy last week.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the questions?
That's it?
Okay.
That was an easy one. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Westbrook. Does anybody else, I cannot really tell, it seems though there's a lot of interest. Is there anybody else that wants to comment upon this? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Just give us your name and address, please.
Kathy Butler, and I'm at 5965 Roundstone Place. I must have been sleeping through all of this. I am very, very sorry. I was told about this today. I actually called because I was concerned about the barn on Shire Rings Road, and found out that I was really more concerned about other things than I was the barn anymore. But, living in Ballantrey, I started calling up people, and no one knew about this. No one. And so, and so, at this point, I mean, I'm sorry I had to go to work today. I've had throat surgery, it's my first day back at work in two weeks, so I was really having to work and didn't get a chance to catch up on this. I guess my understanding is this is the last of it, this is the final, we don't have any other information coming out? Is that correct? Because I talked to N2 Pub, which does all of the publication for Ballantrey, they knew nothing about it, so nothing has been in N2 Pub. I talked to everybody else, they said, no. We, we knew nothing about this. Now, is it a lot of our fault? I assume it is, because we should have been watching, you know, the Dublin on the website. I, I understand that. But, at this point, what I think concerned me was, everything that goes forward does not have to go through P&amp;Z. Am I understanding that correctly? I guess I worked with P&amp;Z for years in Columbus, and that really got me. That, that scared me. I mean, yes, it is very tedious, yes, it is very time-consuming, but there's a reason for it. That's what keeps the planning and zoning, that's what keeps people in check and balances and things like that. So, I'm, I'm Johnny-come-lately, or Kathy-come-lately, whatever you may want to say, but all I can tell you is, is Ballantrey is not aware of this. However, we were supposed to have been, we were not, and we are not, and we still are not. I started to try to put something out very quickly today, but I didn't have enough information to do so. I, I really apologize. If I had enough time, I have the emails and N2 Pub does for everybody in Ballantrey. I could get something out. We can put it in the publications. We can do whatever is necessary. I know that means another meeting. I know I'm asking for a lot, but I'm, I'm a Dublin resident, so I'm, I'm just asking.
And you know what? I would say this about that. In my years up here, the staff, when it sort of gets brought to attention, a failure of communication for anybody's, for any reason...
Yeah.
...just needs to be corrected. And this staff and this council has always been very responsive at trying to correct those types of things. So, let's go through the rest of the conversation here, and we'll see what direction that this takes.
Okay. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Sure. Thank you for coming in. Is there anybody else that would like to comment?[1294.15][1294.15](applause) Ma'am? Oh. Hi, Jane. Come on up. Yeah. I saw your hand, but I didn't see your face.
Jane Fox, 6193 Dublin Road. I saw this in the paper, the Dublin News, about the, the 1,100 acres being looked at for the final community plan. And what, what I hope that, that we can do tonight is take the opportunity to take our time with this. This evening, here are representatives of a lot of neighborhoods, Tuttle, Ballantrey, Llewellyn Farms, Waterford, Historic Dublin. And we're all asking you to give us time to consider these visions that you're laying down as community plans, because a community plan should be kind of shared vision of the community. And what you're hearing tonight is that the citizens aren't participating in these visions. And this particular one, there was one public meeting that was held in October of 2016. It was a presentation, and, and that's great. I mean, we, we, I know we go out of our way, and I know you want support for this, but something this large, that's that cataclysmically different in a, in the west side of town, really requires roundtable discussions by residents. Ballantrey should know all about this. They should be at your table. They should be talking to you about what they aspire this to look like, whether this is a great plan or not, and it looks fabulous. I think it looks exciting, and I think others do too. But I think that they also would like to have an opportunity to help you understand what would work for their adjacent neighborhood, to, to ask you what the traffic might be like, how it will affect the way they get in and out of the place, whether or not you've got services there that will make their life a little bit better, or make their life a little bit worse, whatever that is. I would ask you to just give them a few months. There's no rush for this plan to happen tonight, this approval to happen tonight. You've got plenty of time to get this going. Let them sit down and talk with planning, but make it real roundtable discussions, so that they can actually not be presented with a plan, but participate in the plan. And also, when there are huge plans like this, or rezonings, instead of just having the citizens try to find out the information, can we not send out a letter or mailing to the civic associations, or to residents in adjacent neighborhoods, say that we want you to come and talk about this? Because we're all having trouble keeping up with the pro, pro, excuse me, the, the aggressive project schedule. Everything's coming very fast, and it's very difficult to keep up with. So, I, I will say that I know that, and people who are here tonight from neighborhoods, if you'll please put your hand up to show that you are here, I'd appreciate that. People want to be engaged. They need time. They don't want a mandate. They want, we have great citizens. Please include them. Thank you.[1502.53][1502.53](applause)
Okay, I am not a zoning code expert by any stretch of the imagination. I just want to make sure that we are all, and if I'm correct about it, that we are all understanding where we are in the process. And I'll have Dan, if you can, sort of comment about how we got here, and how we got to this proposal in just a second. But this is not the rezoning. This is just a planning document to help set out what the vision could be. And I think one of the things that drove this process, although it's been underway for quite some time, what drove it more recently was OU's development and the campus that they were proposing, and we needed to take all of that into consideration for the larger area out there, to make sure it was all being done correctly. And if we just looked at the OU portion without the rest of the surrounding area, the infrastructure and everything else, we were going to just fail to plan. And nobody plans to fail, they fail to plan. So, this is a planning document, and Dan, if you could maybe sort of talk through, and I understand that as we're sitting here tonight, there are a lot of people who say they didn't have any idea that this was going on. I get it. That's fine. I'm not trying to say that that's not accurate, or you should have, but there has been a significant amount of activity. We've sat in this chamber for at least two, if not three workshops on this document that we've gone through, that were open to the public, and, you know, maybe, you know, if there's, needs to be additional communication, well, then that's what we'll work on. But I don't know that we're, we're not trying to, I don't know the way that you characterize it, Jane, to, an ultimatum, or, we, that's not what we were attempting to do. But Dana, can you sort of comment on how we got here with this document?
Yeah, there's, there's a long history, but I'll try not to bore everybody with that much. But the, I think the key thing is, as staff, the last thing we want is for anyone to be left out, period. We'll have a meeting every night of, of the year, if that's what we need to get everyone's involvement. So, please, understand, that's the foremost important thing to us. I think Jenny, and I'll go to you in a second, has some information that shows sort of the history of the various meetings, but that really, as I look at hands and concerns, that doesn't even matter. I mean, if, if there's still, you know, information that needs to be garnered, and people feel they were left out, then we need to, we need to back up and regroup. So, that, that's important to be set up front. The other thing I would say is that the, the West Innovation District is sort of a second-generation plan. The first generation of this concept was actually passed, and I'm going to get this totally wrong, because I've been around too long, and all the years run together, but it was like in '0, Jenny's gone '07, '07. It was '07. I know that we started a process in '03, '04, to talk about that area. That area was clear back into the 70s, was in one of the city's initial community plans for research and development. And that, I mean, what great foresight the city had way back then. So, the two big buildings that are now the OU campus were Pharmacia, Adria Labs, Hershey, I can't believe I just said that, Nestle, they're going to be mad at me, forgive me, out there. And that, that's really set the tone for R&amp;D. This was always intended to be R&amp;D. In '04, '03, '04, '05, we really started to look at what would a research park look like. We hired some folks out of the Research Triangle Park, O'Brien Atkins Architects. In fact, they came back and were part of this process. So, back then, it was called the Economic Advancement Zone, the EAZ, as opposed to the WID. Sorry for the acronyms, but that's what, that area, same landmass, same number of acres. And the idea there that they came, well, what they came forward with in some recommendations to the city was this. If you want to do a research and development park, you need to have certain things. You need to have an anchor tenant, which we sought in a, in a university, and we ultimately found. The second thing was that you needed to, of course, have a master plan, and you wanted to align zoning to that vision. That vision was established as part of that upgrade, or that revisit of the community plan back in '07. The other thing they recommended was predictability, that you really do set the standards by which you would develop the area, and put down as much detail as you can in a plan, which is a little bit unlike our previous PU, or PUD processes that people are used to, but to lay down much more detail so that you have predictability, so when someone comes to want to build there, they know what the standard is. There's actually a line that says, this is what the standard is. The concept then of an administrative review team was to allow people to come forward, they had to hit that mark. If they didn't do the process... people to come forward. They had to hit that mark. If they didn't do the process of meeting with staff, hit that mark, then staff would do this kick-up provision of sending it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it was never intended to leave them out, but it was supposed to be a balance between predictability and then putting it before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's been around since 2007. And then all the zoning was put into place in support of that relative to the uses. So that's just, I started to bore you with the history lesson, but that's kind of what it was. This process is, I look at it as Economic Advancement Zone Generation Two, which is called the West Innovation District. And it was building upon that whole concept. Doesn't make it right or wrong, just building on it. Since that was passed, back in that timeframe, we had Ohio University come along. They did do a master plan for the university acreage there, which the city required of them as part of the economic development deal with the university. They did complete that. That did come before the public and before council a couple of times. And so there was a master plan laid down. It was felt that it was time to maybe update that area plan because of what OU was proposing to do. So that kind of became the driver of this next generation of upgrade. So, hate to call it an upgrade, but that's, or revisiting or refreshing the plan. I think the one thing the city's always done well, and it tends to stir the community up, which is a good thing in my book, is plan. And the city puts a lot of efforts into its planning, its community plans, its area plans, which are sub-plans of the community plan. And we're constantly revisiting those. And it probably drives everybody crazy because we're trying to always freshen those up, always trying to look over the horizon, trying to get the next best thing. The thing we don't want to mess up is our residents not being involved. We don't want to mess that one up. So I would ask Jenny to maybe show where we did have the meetings. And it's neither here nor there. If people feel they were left out, then we need to back up, regroup, and make sure you're involved. No problem in doing that. The only other thing I would add, and I'll let the planners correct me if this is wrong, this is a plan. So it's viewed as an update to the, to the community plan for this specific area of acreage. It is very detailed. There's a lot of detail in it intentionally. It's a little different than some of the overarching community plan that we've had in the past. And then this would be followed by more processes, which are the zoning process, if you wanted to update and align that zoning, if the community agreed with that, that will go through a Planning and Zoning Commission to reflect, you know, to take that forward into implementation, if you will. So there are more public meetings to come. This is not, I may be stepping out there, too. This is not a final, it's a final decision on the overarching plan, but it's not putting zoning in place. Now, you might say, well, if you adopt the plan, then you're going to put zoning in place. I would argue, not really. I see a lot of people doing this. I would do this because I think that still has a lot of process to go through. It's not a given that that's going to happen. But that's, that's the world according to me. That doesn't make it right. But I do think there are more processes to happen. Now, if I misspoke on anything from the planner's perspective, please correct me. But that's kind of the background on that.
Thanks, Dana.
Sure.
So in terms of the different phases, we have broken it down, I guess, in three phases from sort of kickoff of this, this version two, if you will. So again, as Dana said, we're looking at the existing plan and how we can look at this and make sure that this is reflecting current trends in research development. So again, the beginning of this was April, August of 2016. So doing workshops, we had staff and some council members go to the Research Triangle Park to then, again, look at, visit, make sure that we're keeping on task with, with that. So then, the public open house piece of this really came in phase two, which was September, October of last year. So had a public open house where we're, you know, including residents, developers, community officials, to be part of that. And then following that, then there was a survey that was provided where we got 214 responses, providing feedback on a number of topics, which then helped guide the plan in terms of how this is going to develop and the uses, land uses, traffic, all those pieces discussed as part of that. So then, once we gathered that information, then we kicked off this phase three, where we're taking this information, looking at our existing plan, figuring out how to make changes that are appropriate in line with the comments, which then, as Mayor Peterson said, culminated in a work session with council to get some word feedback and guidance from council to make sure that we're, we're looking at this in the correct way. During that same timeframe, we had this Dublin Campus Framework Plan, which is the OU master plan. And then had an open house in August, actually, of this year, which, again, we, including everyone that has come to meetings beforehand, and also making sure that we included people within 300 feet of the exterior limits of this plan, so that we're trying to capture as many people that are directly impacted and making sure that they're aware of what's happening and having that opportunity. And then it did also go through the public review process. So this has been the Planning and Zoning Commission as well.
Jenny, I would like to add, I know that 300 feet sounds a little odd, but that's a, it's a notification requirement. We try to go beyond that by social media, website, things like that. We also, I just want to clarify, did we communicate through the homeowner association on this? Sue would, can you?
Yes.
So we, there was communication with the homeowner association, because we also rely on, actually, the homeowner association is often better at communicating than getting to people even than we can be. So I don't want it to be forgotten that we did try to work through them as much as possible in addition to those requirements. So, again, I just want to emphasize, that doesn't mean that it's all perfect and that we got everyone involved that felt they should have been. And if there's, you know, certainly a lot of people who felt they were left out, be all about backing up, regrouping, and including people. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Jenny, just a quick question. How was the survey distributed?
My guess is it would be an online survey. We would have provided, yes, okay, Sue's nodding yes.
So people would have to come to it, rather than, you did, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so it would, yeah, so it would have been distributed.
Sue, can you go?
Yeah. Sorry.
The survey and notice of public meetings were in social media, but also in vehicles like Dublin Direct that went to all the HOAs. So whenever there is a survey, we, we don't just let people at the meetings get access to that survey, but we push it out through all of our tools.
Yeah. I mean, I remember seeing it on Nextdoor. I just wasn't sure what the other distribution channels were. So, thank you.
Again, not to defend or be defensive about that. Just that was our best attempt to try to get the word out. And if that didn't get it done, then we need to, we need to relook at it.
I'm reading minutes from almost exactly a year ago, October of 2016. We ran a workshop, I think. And Planning Commission was in it. Mrs. Gilger, she had public engagement opportunities to date have been largely Ballantrey residents. She felt they were supportive in general. So at some point, we were engaged. I don't, and I know I attended a meeting, and there were lots of people that I knew from Ballantrey that lived there. So there was some, some meeting. But we were talking about traffic, and the residents were concerned about traffic and density. I asked Mr. Papcidero how he planned to respond to the concerns in hopes of getting community support. Mr. Papcidero said the next step is to do a community plan update to amend the current plan and a rezoning. Those will be on a parallel tack while scheduling additional public workshops and open houses to encourage engagement with residents who have concerns. So when did that piece happen? Or is that what's going to happen after we do this?
That would be part of this, part of this whole piece, because that work session would have been like almost a year ago, in October. So again, the public input piece of that would have been integrated as part of this planning process. But as Dana said, this, if this should be adopted, then the next steps would be revisiting the current zoning regulations and making sure that those are in line with this plan and with council and residents' comments and direction. So there is another phase of that.
And then do you have the road network, a slide that's good, that can show folks the road network? Because I thought one really good thing was we were taking Shire Rings as one of the major roadways and sort of redirecting it away from Ballantrey.
I don't, I don't, off the top of my, I don't at this moment, but I could pull it up here in a second. That's not part of what I have in this presentation.
Am I thinking correctly that we did do the road network? We had a lot of, and I did, I'm not locating it in my packet here.
Yeah, sorry.
But I feel like it's, it's out there somewhere, the, the plan to...
About a thoroughfare plan or a road specific?
Yeah, yeah, a thoroughfare plan, kind of a, ideas about where the roadways in the West Innovation District would be located. And I remember Shire Rings goes out to a certain point, and then it goes northward. And the remainder, the remaining part of Shire Rings is de-emphasized, so that the, the Shire Rings, that is currently behind the Ballantrey residents. Yeah, I mean, it, so there's, I feel like there are some good things in here that the residents would be happy about. There's a, clearly a communication piece that...
I know the intention, since '07, and I don't think this changed it, was to pull Shire Rings road to the north, if you will, and pull traffic away from Ballantrey and de-emphasize Shire Rings as it goes west
Right.
towards Cosgrave. That's always been the intent. I'm just...
Yeah, it's not, it's not...
...where it's drawn at, but it's, but it's always been the intent of what we've been trying to achieve is for the future of that, that area.
Yeah, I feel like that's, that's a big part, part of it. And I'd like to, to say, I mean, I think all of us would like to see the cornfields remain and the bean fields. And, you know, we talk forever about our rural character. But the reality is, folks own that land, and we can't compel anybody to farm. We can't compel anybody to, you know, keep their, keep their field and keep their pastoral landscape. Families make decisions, you know, to sell their land. And we know that development happens. And, you know, you look at our community over the years, and it's been, you know, lots of new things, lots of building, lots of growth. And that's, you know, what makes Dublin a really cool place. It's not stagnant. It's constantly changing and evolving. And I think the hallmark of our community and the thing that I'm, that I think is, is the greatest about our community in central Ohio is the fact that we do plan so carefully. And we take into consideration the economic development aspect, but more importantly, you know, how do the neighborhoods feel about it? And we try to, we understand the land's going to develop, and there's really nothing we can do about that. You know, folks have that right, property owners have that right to develop. So short of going out and buying up all the cornfields, we can't prevent that, but we can plan for it so that when the growth comes, it'll be expected and welcomed. And, you know, while we'd all like to keep the cornfield, if it's got to develop, we have an expectation. And you don't have to lie awake in your bed at night worried about what's going to go on, you know, in that field next door, because you have a good idea of, of the plan. And so I think that's, you know, what we can all take comfort in. You know, I have land close to our home that's not developed. And, you know, I do think about it, but I really am not worried because I know we're in Dublin, and we plan, and we do things correctly. And, you know, as best we can, we engage our residents, and, and we have very ordered development as opposed to, you know, the willy-nilly stuff you see if you go south, you know, towards the Hayden Run Court or in such where it's just kind of a free-for-all.
Now, this group takes the planning very, very seriously. And you need only look across the, and I can't tell you how much angst this caused me with the Costco and the toy gasoline station that's outside of our control. We have a very similar situation occurring up and down Highland Coy right now. This group here has worked for two or three years, trying to find a successful solution to that. And at the end of the day, it belongs in another jurisdiction. So rest assured, we're very, very aware. And, you know, it's a plan. It's not, it's not the final zoning. And we'll work with you.
Chris?
A couple of things. Last time we were together, two weeks ago, Tammy was presenting this case. I had three primary concerns. One was the process of which this, which zonings in this area plan would navigate through the ART system and updating our process for how things come to fruition. I see that nothing has changed in this application, and it spells it out pretty clearly on the first page, that there's no intention of talking about process until the master code rewrite happens. And it says at some point in the future that isn't named. So that is the first real concern that I have that prevents me from being able to move forward with this. I do have...
Just on that note, if I could, let's, since that issue's raised, you know, I would, I would prefer that if that's something, I guess the last time that was brought up wasn't real clear, that it was to be removed. And if it's something that's to be removed, then I would ask for council to give us that direction collectively. We would, you know, be more than responsive as staff to address that issue and actually remove it. In fact, you could even strike it this evening if that's something that you wanted to do. My, my point with that is, I, you know, I want us to be responsive, responsive to those issues raised by council. But I would like for council as a body to, to take a, a policy direction or set a policy direction to us on these things. And I, I regret if we didn't, we weren't responsive to that, maybe I misread council. So I want to make sure that I'm reading council.
You may not have misread council. I was saying that, that was my request.
I'm clear what you said, but I want to make sure that, I guess I don't want that to linger. I'd like that to be brought forward and addressed at some point.
What are we talking about, removing the ART part of that, or?
The ART, yeah.
Oh.
And what would be in the absence of the ART?
And this is not drilled down to that specific, I mean, it talks about continue to administer an expedited review process. So, I mean, it doesn't even specific, this plan doesn't specifically say that ART is the only current code.
It certainly does. It says that the ART will be the reviewing body unless the ART determines to send it elsewhere. It says it very clearly.
And I guess I'd like to, another piece of history on the ART, there's a lot of angst in, in certain circles about the administrative review team. The ART was originally designed to mimic a process that we did as staff when the Dublin Methodist Hospital was built. That was a $100 million project, very complicated, a lot of moving parts. And the city internally, as staff, formed a interdisciplined, interdisciplinary, interdisciplinary process so that we were not stove-piped in how we reviewed that. We essentially, as I call it, rolled up our sleeves early, met often with the architect and the owner, namely Ohio Health, Dublin Methodist Hospital, as a team, so that, you know, we could advance the review of that process quickly and thoroughly with all the different disciplines involved. We, we had such a good experience with that, and Ohio Health had such a good experience of that, for probably one of the largest projects ever built in the city's history, that we thought, wow, we should probably mimic that in this kind of a process. So the ART process was then put into the West Innovation District, or at that point, the Economic Advancement Zone Code at, or plan at the time. And that was the only place it was intended to be. Later, the ART was picked up and put into the Broad Street District Form Base Code, and that became a little bit problematic. And I want to be real sure that the, that the, everyone understands the difference between the two and why. When it came to that area that we're talking about tonight, at the time that ART was put in that, I think there was a higher trust factor, back to the point about planning and zoning commissions versus non-planning and zoning commissions. When you put in a lot of detail about the expectation of what something's supposed to, almost a checklist, if you hit these marks, then you have met the intent of this, of this plan and the code. And the ART, with, with a professional staff of planners and so forth, should be able to do that. If it didn't meet that or any piece along the way, then it got what was called a kick-up provision, and staff would then send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for, for full review. And, you know, even if, even if the staff felt that something didn't, it was too big of a project and should have bigger input by, by, by the public, then that should go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's where ART began. And it was, and also, this area looked, walked, and talked more like the rest of Dublin had over the years. So I think there was a little bit more confidence in the ability to do that. Whereas in the Broad Street District development, which frankly is a 180 from anything Dublin had done before, the ART was put into that process. So I would just suggest, if you're ever going to have an ART, that's, this is probably where it ought to be. But if it's something that council doesn't collectively want, then I would recommend, if that's not what you want, then give us the guidance. We'll, we'll pull it out. Now, what would happen in the place of that? It would be like we, we did with PUDs and then redo the rest of the city. A developer brings a project forward, staff negotiates with and talks to the developer, looks at the community plan, tries to compare the two, tries to get the case ready for the public, brings it to the planning and zoning process, where then the public has, has an input through the planning and zoning process, and it goes down that road. So that's, that would be what would be put in place.
But also, just to be clear, when it came to... But also, just to be clear, when it came to rewriting the zoning code, planning and zoning would be involved in that process?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what we're basically talking about is, is setting standards and then who's going to check this project against these standards to see if it meets it? And in the PUD process, planning and zoning did that every step of the way. In this process, it would be they set the standard for the whole area through the zoning code. Pl- planning and zoning, public input and everything, they set the standard. Now, this architectural or administrative review team is looking at the project and saying, does it meet the standards that planning and zoning set? Am I, right, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and again, I think, and do you agree with that? I, I thought I heard you say no.
No, I didn't say no. I'm just thinking about the PUD process. The PUD process is basically picking apart our zoning code and taking some pieces of it, but then putting different standards in for a given piece of ground.
Right. Specific piece, specific project.
Yeah. And so it has a specific text. So, in some cases, parts of a PUD, it'll defer to the zoning code, but then in, I think more of the purpose of a PUD is to have specific standards for...
Customized project.
Customized for that particular project. And that was something that was negotiated between staff and the developer and then they would go to P&amp;Z and then the developer and P&amp;Z would agree on it. Then P&amp;Z would bless it, it would go on to council. Council would approve it as a rezoning. And then staff would make sure that the zoning text was adhered to going forward. And if it was not, then staff would make a decision, we need to put the, you know, you tell the developer, if you want to make this change, you need to go back to P&amp;Z. It's too significant of a departure from what is approved in the zoning text. So, that being said, you know, it was constantly staff sort of saying, mm, i- i- in effect, it's kind of a different process, certainly ART, but in many cases, there are, are elements of it that are similar in that you have your professional staff making judgments. And, you know, I was just trying to think, you know, what has ART done that's egregious? I, I can't think of a project that I thought, oh my gosh, ART took that and they ran with it and they went way off the, you know, off the reservation and did something that P&amp;Z or council or the public was, would be unhappy with. And I just can't remember a project where I felt, I feel like staff, you know, overstepped with regard to, to ART. I, I feel like it kind of formalized what goes on anyway at the staff level.
And in fairness to the, to the whole process out there, there hasn't been that many cases, that many. I mean, there's been a couple.
Back to you.
Can I finish my thought now?
You overdo, yeah.
Okay. I, I will say one thing about ART and its role with the hospital is it was unlike anything this community had ever done because literally it was life and death. There were helipads, there were duplicity and triplicity of things, of, the redundancy was significant. So, people were coming and their life and death depended on how quickly they got there and the route that they got to take and things like that. So, very, very different than what we're talking about at West Innovation District. Here, we're talking about innovation, talking about thinking through what tomorrow might hold and how we might do those things. So, two, extremely different things. All right, my thoughts.
Okay. So I still have to just say this. If, sorry, Chris, if, if council, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm pushing for that direction, doesn't have to be tonight.
I'll vote yes. I would like to review the ART process.
It can be whenever, whenever you want to do it, but I just want you to know, I'm, I'm going to need that direction at some point.
Okay. We'll get to that. Yeah, we'll get to that.
I said yes. I tried to answer you. Okay. All right, to, to continue. So there are discrepancies. This is a very prescriptive community plan update and there are discrepancies between this and our zoning code. I have a fear that we are creating the same problem that we have in the historic district where we have the historic district guidelines and then we have an overlay district that reverts to the Bridge Street Code. So there are a number of items in here that cause me to, let me get to the right page here, that, that I believe it would be difficult to use this document by those professionals that do. When it talks about materials, it talks about stone. It says the use of stone is encouraged but should be limited to foundations at the ground level of an elevation. Well, that's in conflict with the balance of our zoning code architectural standards. We talk about, it, it addresses scale and variation and transparency. Many of these things that, the percentages and the descriptive nature of this document is going to be in conflict with our zoning code. So we have to really decide what document we want to be the governing document. Who's going to be right when two things come together? Which is going to have the greater mass to move the other? I don't think that we address that in this, at this point in time. So I, I think that it may, that some of this may be inhibiting the very thing that we're trying to accomplish, a speed to market and a predictable process and, and those things. So I have some fears about that. I have a, a very big concern. I read through the meeting minutes, let me find them here, for this, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there were three comments in the, in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first comment, here it is, sorry. The first comment was asked by a commissioner and it was, how does this plan relate to the 33 Smart Mobility Plan on page 21 of 22 of the September 21st, 2017 meeting minutes? The second question asked by the Planning and Zoning Commission was about the word innovation, that it can be simplistic and words like leadership are becoming overused and meaningless. So that was reflective of the nomenclature of the district. The third and final comment from the Planning and Zoning Commission from the chair says that, that they indicated it would be awkward for the commission to make a recommendation while staff is still taking public comment. And so they did not feel that they had really grasped the collective wisdom of the, of the public when they, it was jointly setting down this path simultaneously, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public input process. Normally, our Planning and Zoning Commission would be one of the main vehicles that we use to, to garner public input. And so, from the meeting minutes, it appears that the chair didn't feel on page 22 of 22, didn't feel that they were garnering public input, that it was happening elsewhere and they didn't have, it hadn't come to fruition yet. So, so those are really the core of, of my concerns. The approval process, I think that it would kind of be like my son, who's 14, asking me to go to the movies. And I might think it would be a good idea for him to go to the movies, but there's a whole lot of information I need to know before he's going to go to the movies, of who he's going to go with, how's he going to get there, how's he going to get home, what movie are they going to see? There's a lot of information, that's the process of seeing the movie, that, that we don't have nailed down here. And so I, I have concerns about the process. I have concerns about this document being in conflict with our, with our general building code. And I think that we are a little bit out of order on the public comment portion because it came through the Planning and Zoning Commission without having that body used to garner the public comment. Those are my three primary concerns. Thank you.
It, it seems to me, I mean, unless somebody, I, I think I'm going to make a motion to table this, to allow us to address these issues, to address the public input. We can't keep doing this forever though, so if we could maybe get everybody corralled, go, go to your neighbors, do whatever you got to do if we're going to do this again. I, I think there is a fundamental different feeling though, if you came into this chamber thinking that this council was somehow trying to sneak something past you. I hope you don't feel that way now. I can understand why it's possible you could have, but I don't want you to leave feeling that way. So I, I, I'm going to make a motion that we table this to allow staff to meet with the residents. I don't know how exactly they're going to go about setting that up, but I think that we need to do that to get some feedback. I also would like to get, I don't know that I, I can't sit here and say I know what the best process is for this review. If maybe we could have staff clarify some options for us and address that issue.
We're going to need to answer Dana's questions here too about the ART process.
Well, that's what I was saying. He said, I don't need an answer tonight, I need to know what we're considering.
I know, but that should be part of what we're talking about.
That's what I mean.
And that's one piece. And I, I know there's many other thoughts about the document and so forth, so that certainly needs to be garnered from, from council as well. Do you have a sense of, what would help me to give direction to the staff is your, your sense of timeline on this? I mean, we can, we can move quickly to pull people together and, and have a couple more meetings. I mean, that's what we're here to do. I want to assure the public, that's what we're here to do and you. And, but, you know, I, so, give me a deadline. I'd love to have one.
We have two more, two more council meetings with this council, right? So it would have to be four weeks from tonight would be the, the last.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I mean, the, the world isn't going to stop turning.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that it, then it's not...
No, I just, I just want to be, yeah, I agree. I just want to be clear as to what your expectations are and I don't want it to, to linger. I don't want these folks to feel like anything's lingering if we waited. So I, I just like an expectation, so.
I think the community plan process has always been a fantastic one in this city. When we have, when we have touched our community plan, it's been a highly involved process that has been really transparent and encouraged participation at every level. So I, in our community plan process has always involved our boards and commissions first and foremost. We've had joint meetings. I remember when I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, coming to a meeting with a city, you know, with the city council, that was a really big deal. I would like to see our Planning and Zoning Commission take a really hard look at this and garner pub, because if nothing else, we get the seven members of the public chiming in in a very meaningful way there and they can garner the public comments at that point. And, you know, I mean, open houses are, are good too, but I, I really like when they do it with the Planning and Zoning Commission because they have an eye for code and, and for dialogue. But that's just me.
I guess, yeah, I appreciate that. I guess the thing I'm kind of fishing for is, is the, I appreciate that. Is the, is the concept of going into the holidays and if I push that, you know, try to get that done before the holidays, which we could try to do or in between, then is that going to be perceived as doing it during the holidays? So, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to be...
I guess that's what I was suggesting. I would say we either, in my world, continue this to the last meeting of the year or I don't see, I don't see how we can put something on the agenda for council for next year. To pick a date for some, I don't know if we have a meeting schedule yet, so.
Yeah.
We probably do. But that doesn't seem wise to me. So I...
Well, I guess what I'm looking for is you want it by the end of the year or do you want to wait till next year?
Do you think you can get it done?
I put it, I put it that way.
Can you get it done this year?
Can you get it done in four weeks?
We'll make it happen. That's what we're here to do.
Well, you've got 35 to 40 confused people out here who either aren't familiar with this thing or haven't read it or don't understand it. And I think, you know, that's, that's a big problem from our normal procedures and how we run this government. So, I agree with you that maybe we ought to just table this and get the names of these people. And yes, this has been going on for a year and a half, but somehow they missed law this or they have concerns. So I suppose we get ahold of you folks and we start having a meeting and you tell us what you think and then we get on with this.
I'll second.
So, a motion to table until, what is the meeting?
Postpone it till December 4th?
December 4th.
Postpone.
Yeah, postpone till the December, to December 4th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We will...
I'm sorry. No, go ahead. No, no. Sorry.
I'm the Salem.
I'm sorry. I keep jumping in. I apologize. We will use every means possible to get, to get word out. So I'm going to ask, I know Nick Plowk, my management assistant, is sitting in the, in the lobby, so I'll ask Nick to take your information as, as you exit too. So thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, Mayor.
Um, Salem?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we can take a sec. I don't know, if anybody wants to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome. You can take a moment and step out. Okay, moving on to ordinance 70-17, Ann.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to the W.W. Williams Company, LLC to induce it to lease a facility to relocate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Kyle.
Good evening, members of city council. There is no change to the ordinance as introduced. With us tonight, we have two representatives from the W.W. Williams Company, Andy Gasser, Chief Financial Officer, and Kelly Turley, Senior Vice President of Operations and Administration, and they'd like to have a couple of words.
Please, welcome.
Thank you. We're, we're thrilled at the opportunity to, to move to Dublin, excited to be coming to the community. Andy and I especially are excited. We both live about five minutes away from the new office, so.
There you go.
And mostly just want to thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for coming. We love having you here.
Can you share where your new office is located yet?
It's, uh, we'll be, we haven't signed a lease yet, but looking at, don't say? All right. We haven't signed a lease yet, but near tunnel. How about if I tell you that?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
In the existing building.
Existing.
There you go. Great. Well, congratulations.
Glad to have you.
Love having you. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Anything else, Kyle?
No.
Nothing from council? Ann?
Uh, Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salem?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ordinance 72-17, Ann?
Mending chapter 35 of the codified ordinance is to revise the schedule of fees and service charges for City of Dublin services.
No change, except for any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Ann?
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms? I'm sorry. Sorry, wrong, wrong case. Got my numbers backwards.
Ann?
Uh, Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salem?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ordinance 72-17, Ann?
Mending chapter 51, establishing user fees and capacity charges for the sanitary sewer system.
Angel?
There are no changes from the first reading.
Questions from council? Chris?
I thought, thank you for doing the homework on the discount programs and those low income and, and senior plans. That was very helpful. My only question is with respect to the Dublin Road Water Towers, Dari Fields and Dublin Road Towers. The 20-year bonds went out in 2009 for 1.71 million. Says that it is December 31st this year, we'll have 1.135 million. If I do my math right, it's, we've gone eight years and 33%, we've paid, we've paid If I do my math right, it's, we've gone eight years and 33%, we've paid, we've paid 33% of that capital, or roughly 4% per year. How, are we escalating that payment for the balance of the term so that we're still in within 20 years, or did we extend the 20-year program, or?
Yeah, when we refund, we don't extend the life of it at all. So, it remains, if we refund and there's 15 years left, it's a 15-year deal. So, it just happens to be that amortization schedule. It doesn't extend beyond the initial 20 years that was originally done.
So, the payments get more escalated towards the end?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was my only question on that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salem?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 73-17, Ann?
Authorizing establishment of the Ring's Unit Trust Special Revenue Fund.
Again, no change, other than any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Hearing none? Ann?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Salem?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Ordinance 74-17, Ann?
Authorizing establishment of the property assessed Clean Energy Pace Agency Fund.
Dana? Anything different?
There are no changes from the first reading.
No changes at any. Any questions from council?
When in outer space, for a sec.
Hearing none? Ann?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salem?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ordinance 75-17?
This is adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
Introduce it. Thanks, Tim.
Good evening, members of council. In your packet on Thursday was the administration's proposed 2018 operating budget. During the other section of tonight's meeting, we are going to do the overview, which we hope will then allow for more time at the first budget workshop on Wednesday, to really get into the nitty-gritty details, specifically on the personnel changes. And then we also have a workshop scheduled for next Monday as well. Both of those are at 6:00 o'clock, so you'll hear more in the next couple of minutes.
Okay, we will wait with bated breath for that. Ordinance 76-17?
Amending various sections of ordinance 1517, compensation plan for non-union personnel, and adding section 17, compensation and benefits eligibility chart.
Good evening, council. Ordinance 76, sorry.
Tim introduced it. I said, "Thanks," and then, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Ordinance 7617 is really kind of a companion to the operating budget, and it also proposes that we incorporate recommendations of the reclassification for several positions that came out of a review of our classification plan study that was done earlier this year by Westcott Hunter Compensation and Human Resources Consulting, and there were a few other changes recommended by staff. Also, we're looking to update several sections of our compensation plan ordinance to include the instant bonus program, sick leave, bereavement leave, short-term disability, temporary work assignments, the non-exempt and exempt listings that we have in the ordinance, compensatory time, shift differential, and on-duty pay. An additional section was also added to this to provide a cross-reference chart to assist in deciphering the eligibility for compensation and benefits amongst the various workforce segments. Just as a reminder, we're going to be going over the positions, you know, part of this again on Wednesday as part of the Finance Committee meeting, but I'm prepared to answer any questions you have tonight, or if you prefer to wait until Wednesday, that's fine as well.
Questions from council for right now?
Yeah, just really quickly, so just from my recollection from our conversation, it's been about 10 years since you've had this done.
It's been about 10 years since we did a comprehensive classification plan study, that's correct.
And what is your plan moving forward? Typically, best practice is every three, four, five years?
Three to five years is our intent moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And with the operating budget, we'll see all of the net gain-loss numbers associated with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
The consultant that you paid, that you worked with on this, what was the cost of the review?
It was in the neighborhood of about $35,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll see you back on this one on November 20th. Ordinance 77-17, Ann?
An ordinance pursuant to section 731.231 of the Ohio Revise Code, adopting a standard code known as the International Fire Code 2015 pertaining to fire, fire hazards, fire prevention, as prepared and promulgated by the International Code Council, public or private organization publishing a model or standard code, and repealing the ordinance of the existing fire code.
Introduce it. Thanks, Tim. Donna?
Good evening, members of council. On August 8th of this year, the Washington Township Board of Trustees adopted a standard code known as the International Fire Code 2015 that included some amendments to the existing code. These modifications are generally administrative in nature, with the exception of section 505.391, which is in regard to false alarms. As written, the township trustees have the ability to assess a charge of up to $300 for each subsequent false alarm occurring after three false alarms by that system within the same calendar year. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and Fire Marshal Mike Eltamar is here on behalf of Washington Township Fire Department, should you have any questions.
Questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on November 20th on that one. Ordinance 78-17?
Amending sections 153.058, 059, and 062 of the double codified ordinances to create the Historic South District and associated regulations within the Bridge Street District.
Introduce it. Thanks, Tim.
I have a single presentation for this ordinance, and the next one?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Should we just, should we read the other one now, then? Okay, Ann, could you also read 79?
Sure. Res zoning 25 parcels totaling approximately 5.04 acres from BSD HC, Bridge Street District, Bridge Street Historic Core District to BSD HS, Bridge Street Historic South District.
Introduce that as well. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. As you may recall, we reviewed this at our work session on the 16th, and I have a similar presentation, just to orient you to where we are. So, we're looking at two different ordinances, one for the code and one for area rezoning for the properties. So, we see the, in the orange outline here, the larger historic district, and then the portion that we're talking about as part of this, these two ordinances, is highlighted in yellow. As we talked at our last meeting, directive from council to address the code, the Bridge Street code, as it relates to development pressures, particularly south of Bridge Street, along South High Street, so that we are taking into account neighborhood concerns due to some development applications and approvals, obviously making sure that the character of that area of the historic district is maintained as best we can, and making sure that the zoning code regulations align with that. So, we have had some significant public meeting engagement, including council meetings, public workshops, meeting with individual groups for the past year and a half or so, which is outlined here, and we did review that last meeting as well. So, as I said, we're creating a new district in order to accomplish these goals. We're creating a new district, the Historic South District, which is currently zoned Historic Core, and then, oops, excuse me, and will be then the new proposed district is Historic South. So, it includes 25 properties, which total about five acres. In terms of the code, as we've talked before, looking at uses was part of that, making sure that we are limiting parking structures, because again, that's not feeling compatible with the southern portion of the historic district, limiting the size and the hours of operation for eating and drinking, as well as commercial deliveries and refuge collection, making sure that we're being sensitive then to the neighbors that are with, that are adjacent to these properties, as well as including exercise and fitness facilities that are size limited. In terms of building types, as we've reviewed previously, looking at increased setbacks, particularly along the rear property line, to make sure we're providing the space and the views that is characteristic of the district. Also, limiting building height so that we are not more than two stories, or at the maximum point of where we measure roof height, 24 feet, particularly along South High Street, and then as you're moving down the alleys towards residential, that you are not permitted to have more than one and a half stories or 18 feet in height within 50 feet of that rear property line. Again, so we're making sure that the development capabilities and influences are really kept to a minimum there, and being respectful of the residential component behind a lot of these properties. Additionally, limiting the footprint of any building so that we are having smaller buildings as opposed to larger, larger infill buildings that are out of character with the district. So, worked really hard to make sure that these smaller buildings with then some smaller connection ways are provided, that way buildings can be linked together, but they're not creating a large mass across the site, minimizing lock coverage requirements, again, to make sure that we're not building out the extent of every site. We have the same parking standards in terms of number, that's not being changed as part of this, and obviously wanting to make sure parking is located to the rear, and we're keeping that pedestrian-oriented feel of the district. So, here shows then the existing district, and then the new proposed district with that to Historic South for those 25 properties. This just shows this in context of the larger Bridge Street map, and ARB and ART, ARB and Planning Commission have all reviewed this, finding that it meets the applicable criteria. And in terms of the code and the map, Planning Commission has provided a recommendation of approval with no conditions. So, the recommendation is approval of both of these ordinances at the second reading, which will be on the 20th. So, I'm available to answer any questions.
Before we get to questions, I know there's been a fair amount of interest. Is there anybody that wants to testify on this ordinance, but just didn't have the opportunity to sign in? Just give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is David Galbraith. I live at 4203 Hurtford Lane. Recently this year, I purchased with my wife the property at 75 South High Street, which is located in this new proposed district. We have one retail tenant, which is the Hey Penny Ivor Store, and we have six office users in the building. I believe that this new zoning with the curfews and the time restrictions only further, only further limits the area's diversity in terms of the businesses who are there, which is going to lower the street traffic of the people who are going to the, to the restaurants and the bars, which will only continue to hurt the diversity of the businesses that are operating there, and this area will become a very boring place. The tenant who we have up front, the Hey Penny Ivor Store, has currently lost about 40% of their business with the, with the coffee shop that went out of business a few years ago, and then when biddies went out of business. So, foot traffic does affect the retail businesses that operate there, and the more we go to office users, the more we are going to hurt the retail presence. I think that we should eliminate any curfew restrictions, and we should not dictate the type of businesses who should be in the area. And I believe that this area should return to the National Historic Preservation Guidelines that were enacted in the 1980s and that have served this area very well. So, I would ask the council to either postpone any zoning changes, or amend it to go back and to follow the National Historic Preservation Guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, did you raise your hand?
Jay Egspeler, I live at 7250 Kaufman Road. I'm the owner of 14, 18, and 22 South High Street in the Historic District. I would join Mr. Galbraith's concerns about the additional regulations in the area. I don't think that the Historic District is short on regulations, and while this may be an attempt to limit to just the south, southern portion of the district, it's just one more layer of regulations in the area that I don't believe we need. I think the system is working pretty well. The project that was of some concern over the last couple of years is not there. The system worked, the people spoke, this council spoke, and any other affiliated boards, and it worked. And I think all we're doing now is trying to put another Band-Aid on what is already a wounded area with a lot of Band-Aids in place. The National Historic Preservation Guidelines would work very well. They have for years. I think they would continue to work very well. We've since put the Historic District Guidelines from the city onboard, the BSD Core Guidelines, and now we're going to try to implement another one. The time problems with the curfew at 10:00 p.m., I don't own a parcel in this area, but I don't think it's right. I think we've got favoritism being in place for the Dublin Village Tavern. We know who owns that building. We're effectively going to rule out any competition for other entities that may consider restaurants or bars as part of their tenant mix. We do have a significant problem with retail versus professional use. Almost all of South High is now going professional. If you want foot traffic, if you want more retail, this is not going to help. Other issues have contributed to that over the years and continue to contribute to it, that being the parking issues. Many of the folks that own these buildings are small business operators, they're owner-occupied businesses, owner-occupied buildings, they can't afford to take out of their budget the amount of expense that's required to repair, replace, maintain some of these parking lots. And so, any kind of change in use from the professional services to retail simply isn't going to happen, because first thing the retail people want to know is, where's the parking, and how do I use it? I think that's all I have. I would join in the request to either postpone this, or just, you know, deny it or not approve it until such time as we could get back to some sort of unified system that accomplishes the best for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Anybody else? Jane?
Jane Fox, 6193 Dublin Road. I helped write the overlay, but I agree with these folks. It's a Band-Aid. It's an attempt to preserve what we can of the Historic District. The residents came because the Bridge Street code was destroying the integrity of the Historic District. So, in order to try to save what we could, all we could do is go and say, "Listen, you know, we're concerned, the character is disappearing, do something." So, what we came up with was the overlay. But the overlay, when you put a Band-Aid on something, hurts somebody else. The protections for the Historic District are absolutely weakened by the Bridge Street code. They override the historic design guidelines. And you knew from your last meeting that the ARB is struggling to try to figure out which one wins out. Right now, you can see it yourself, the Historic District character is slowly disappearing. You spent $100,000 on the historic cultural assessment that told you that you need to enlarge the Historic District, that it's under threat. So, it's very difficult. We all want progress. I walk down there, I love all of the new restaurants and all, but no one, no public member that I've talked to, except maybe one or two, I don't want to say 100%, wants to see the Historic District disappear. And you have to make a commitment that that doesn't happen. So, the overlay is a bone thrown to the residents to help them maintain or preserve what you can, but it's hurting the businesses. They're right, it's not going to help. You've got to commit to preserving the Historic District, per ied. So, you need to improve the design guidelines. You need to make the ARB understand that you are committed to preserving the district at all costs. You need to take a look at the cultural and historic assessment and decide what you want to do with it. I mean, it could be something that just creates the vision that the public buys into. And on this overlay, if you decide to, okay, I don't know how a 10,000-square-foot fitness facility managed to get into that four-square block thing, but that needs to be removed. I don't even, we don't even have a 10,000-square-foot building in that area. And then, whatever you do, make sure, as the others have said, that the Historic Preservation Guidelines are the overriding standard of review for the Historic District. Thank you.
Christina?
All right, ready for comments? I've got a question real quick, if I could, of staff. I'm curious, what would the effect of the National Historic Preservation Guidelines, what would that effect be if we would do what some had suggested? I'm thinking about preserve, you know, we all want to preserve the Historic District, and that by that means, you know, the buildings. So, how is it that we compel property owners to keep their buildings and keep them in good repair? And what would these National Preservation Guidelines do?
I mean, I'd have to look into that a little bit further, but if the suggestion is, then you're using that in lieu of a zoning code, I think, again, there's ramifications for that on either side. So, I mean, we use the guidelines as part of our review, our own guidelines, which, again, are looking at the Secretary of Interior standards. So, those are taken into account as part of our review and ARB's review as well.
Okay.
Christina?
I feel like we're a little schizophrenic here.
So, along that, you just actually segued very nicely for me. The question that I have is why, if we don't have the governance piece worked out yet, if we don't know how we're going to reconcile competition between what we're proposing and the Bridge Street code, and whatever other things may be out there, then why would we move forward with doing this prior to understanding how that governance should work? You know, and that before the guidelines are updated? It seems a little bit like cart before the horse to me, to say, "We're going to change the rules, but then we don't know how to really, we don't know how to reconcile them." And so, that's the struggle for me, and I have the same question about the fitness facility.
The first piece, I mean, it is, it's always a chicken and the egg, what's coming first. But the directive from council was to address the code to make sure, again, that neighbor, resident concerns that you're allowing development that is potentially two, the current code will allow two and a half stories, much larger building footprints. So this proposed amendment limits the size of buildings, limits the height of buildings, increases the setback. So, again, we are, the directive was to look at the code, make sure that that can address the resident concerns as an interim. Then, again, we're looking at this larger code amendment, which also includes updates to the guidelines. So council's directive was, look at the signs related to the Bridge Street as well as the Historic District, but knowing that they follow on larger, more comprehensive code amendment is coming, which then includes updating the guidelines as part of that. So, again, we're following through on what we felt council wanted us to do, which was really try to listen to the neighbors, make sure that we are addressing this to the best that we can, and addressing all their concerns, residents and business owners, because we're, again, we're trying to balance all of those pieces together. And then for the exercise fitness uses. So the current Historic Core District has that same language, that you can have an exercise fitness facility, maximum 10,000 square feet. As part of ARB's review, it was, there was this discussion as part of their open house in June with residents wanting to see then that exercise fitness component be included in this new district. Now, I get that 10,000 square feet is a pretty big size. I mean, it's going to regulate itself because you're going to have to meet the building requirement, so you're not going to be larger than 1,800 square feet. The reason it's not updated is because it impacts other districts that we're not addressing at this point. So, I mean, we could try to make that clearer in the second reading, if that would make everybody feel better, we can look at how to address that. We were just, ARB directed us to include that in this new district as part of their review based on resident comments.
Right, I guess if it's self-regulating and you can't do it anyway, I don't know why we'd put it in there.
Okay.
It just seems, it seems superfluous to me to put something in there that we know we can't do.
Okay.
And I hear you about, you know, council saying, hey, let's go try to address some of this. It still feels very much like, I don't know that this is quite the right direction. And I'm not saying you guys did not do a good job. I think you did a great job for what you're dealing with and what you're having to work with. But it is a struggle, and it probably does feel like there's not enough retail, there's too much professional office. And these are a lot of different questions that all play together. I'm not sure we can address all of them in a conference.
But the guidelines aren't going to do that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
It's more about character. The guidelines are character. It's materials, it's making sure that your paint colors, if your building was built in 1880, is painted, you know, correctly. So, I mean, it's things like that. It's more character, important character details, but the code is not going to get to that more than a guideline.
Right, and that's kind of exactly what I'm saying, like, it's not going to address that.
Right.
And so that's just not a piece of this that's going to be addressed in there. Sort of, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I guess I would like to see a little bit more discussion about how we will start to address some of the potential discrepancies.
I mean, we, from a staff perspective, we've already started that. As part of this larger code amendment, we are, we are under review of that right now.
Are you working, like, directly with P&amp;Z?
It's with staff.
ARB, that's what I meant, ARB.
At this point, it's with staff and the consultant because we're working through the existing code, making sure that we're addressing things in the code, and then pulling out pieces and putting them in the guidelines where they're appropriate. And then, again, that will become a really big public process with P&amp;Z, with ARB, with council, with the residents. I mean, this, again, it's evolving, so.
Okay. Thank you for the additional explanation. It's very helpful to understand sort of where you guys are at in the process.
Other questions? John?
Go ahead.
Chris?
Yeah.
So this is our third attempt to try to protect the, our Historic District, really the, the area that catapulted the rest of our central city to be urban and walkable. I'm not sure why we got away from the Historic District Guidelines initially and put the Bridge Street zoning straight over this district with the historical designation. You know, we have since, this body has since kind of ruled against that with both the library and some other development that has happened in our Historic Core because we felt like it was on the edge, or it was on the end, or something like that. Amy is exactly right in saying that she feels like we are a bit schizophrenic because we have sent very mixed messages collectively to what this district should be. And I know that the more code that we try to write and the more prescriptive that we try to get, the more, the bigger the basket of unintended consequences gets. We are, you know, we have seen and see more tonight of what's all in that basket of unintended consequences. I think the first question that we have to answer, and nobody can answer but the seven of us, and we need to take to it, is what is going to be the controlling guidelines for development in this district? Is it going to be the Historic District Guidelines? Is it going to be the Bridge Street Code? Or is it going to be this overlay district? And those three items will yield very different results. So if we start with the end in mind of what do we want this district to look like? You know, if we want it to look like post-World War II Germany, then that, then a code is going to be written in that direction. If we want it to look like, you know, just a suburban downtown with, you know, different buildings that were built at different period of times that have different appearances, this is probably the code for that. If we want it to remain true to its core, then the Historic District Guidelines are going to be the governing documents for that. And we can have them chase their tails in very good ways and give us great information until the cows come home. But until we decide what it is that our vision is for this district, Jay was exactly right, we spent $100,000 on our historical inventory. Okay, so now we know what we have, and then the determination is, is it valuable or is it not valuable? You know, I am in favor of the Historic District Guidelines being the government, governing document on historic Dublin in its entirety. It's going to hurt because we're not going to get big and sexy and fancy and shiny stuff. But we have, we have the rest of our town, they get big, sexy, shiny, fancy stuff. So.
I'd just add, I have more questions now than I did before. I guess I'm not, I don't feel like I'm in a position to support this particular piece here tonight, so I'd like to have more answers.
I think that Chris hit the nail on the head when we talk about the unintended consequences. I've had a sidebar with Vince Papcidero at a P&amp;Z meeting and talking about the fact that, you know, when you enact this, then, in effect, you're going to get no development, you're going to get no interest, you're going to get, you're going to end up killing what's there. And so, you know, everybody, you know, I think about biddies, I think about that building all the time, and, you know, rumors of what is and isn't inside, and, you know, the condition of the building and such. And, you know, I always talk about benign neglect, where nobody's going out to destroy it, but when you have a property that sits vacant for years and years and years, it deteriorates to the point, and we've seen it happen in other historic structures, you can't do anything to save it, there's not, there's not an economic argument for that. And so, that being said, are we ready to see that happen? Because if you don't have anything happening, if you don't have anybody interested because there's no economic incentive to do so, you know, you can curfew, you can make it a great place for, you know, people to live, or you can make it a vibrant, you know, district with, you know, some reinvestment. And what I hear, what I understand is happening is we're going to have nothing going on, no new building, you know, that big L-shaped building that nobody particularly likes, it's too big, it's, you know, not really historic, it's got parking, you know, it's not what you'd like to see, but, you know, there's all kinds of interest in that site, but there is not any way to make it economically feasible that that'll ever redevelop. So we're stuck with it. And, you know, you hear from folks that have invested in buildings and nothing's going to happen. So, you know, it's going to stay small, it's going to stay quaint, it's going to stay quiet, and maybe that is what we want, but I also think that, you know, an unintended consequence is we're going to lose the very buildings that we say are so important because nobody's going to invest in them. So, you know, there's, there's that. And that's why, you know, I said I'm feeling really schizophrenic because on the one hand we're saying we want one thing, and on the other hand, we're saying we want all these other things. And I think the idea was, we have one particular character, and it exists today in terms of the number of historic structures and the type of historic structures. We've got a lot of mid-century stuff that's not historic Dublin on the north side of 161 Bridge Street. And then you've got all of the quaint little shops and buildings on the south side, and I think the thought was, well, let's preserve everything on the south side. But I think we're going to end up with a benign neglect that's resulted in, you know, there's a couple of buildings there, you know, you look in the window and it's just pretty horrific to see what's going on inside, so I don't know what the answer is.
I think you're, I think you're absolutely right in that account. You know, it just feels, like I said, it feels, in this case, like a little bit of cart before the horse. And I'm not saying that this was not a good job that was done, but I also don't think we're going to completely lose the Historic District in four months when we start really talking about, I mean, it just feels very rushed for what I can't see to be a good reason. You know, so, you know, that's where I struggle, and I just feel like we've got some other competing, you know, thoughts on curfew versus non-curfew and things I think that should be talked through as we're talking through, you know, what this area should be and having that more comprehensive look and understanding, you know, to Amy's question earlier about, you know, if, how does the Historic Preservation, you know, how does that work with everything? So I'm just not ready for this yet, is where I'm going.
I want to compliment you on putting this together, and most of it is architectural setbacks and some architectural detailing. I think, you know, German Village was a good example of this, like, where do you get that perfect synergy of an interesting community that you can go out and eat and drink at and still has a residential component, that's the majority of this component too, that you can enjoy and have a balance between those two uses? And I think, I think it's true of what was said tonight, that if you close, you're not going to draw restaurants if you're closing them at 10:00. So, you know, some of these things have to be tweaked if we're even going to consider this, and I think it's very important. I think the idea of preserving the south side is interesting. I agree with what you said, Amy, there's a lot of architecture that is down there that's really not, period, that hopefully will get developed, and somebody will say, hey, let's go in here and change this and upgrade the whole thing. I also want to say that a number of years ago, we did try to, there's 1,000 parking spots back there behind those buildings. We did a study, and at one time we tried to go down and ask the landowners, which was really a handful of people, I thought it was down to about seven to nine people that owned a lot of the commercial stuff, and Dublin was willing to asphalt, landscape, and nightlight all the backs of those buildings so that they could be used for public use in the evening and for the private use during the day. And this was after we ran and fixed the sewer in Blacksmith Alley, which was rather expensive, but had to be done first. But I got also say that we had, when we finally, after a year of this, these meetings, it turned out that the landowners who held the tenants' leases weren't that forthcoming in saying, hey, yeah, let's go do this. They said, hey, let's go do this, but want the city to pay us, again, on top of the improvements we were willing to make, which was landscaping, asphalt, striping, and cleaning up the backs of all these businesses. And it's unfortunate because in a way, those same landowners stalled out the chance for that whole area to develop in a correct way. So I don't know if you want to call it a matter of self-interest, but it didn't really happen like we really wanted it to, and it was really because the people who held the land didn't want to go along with the city in these improvements. But people have talked about parking garages and things down there. There is so many parking spots, it's pathetic, if behind those buildings, someone would organize them in an organized fashion and set them up and stripe them out and asphalt them. So I agree that, you know, we're in an unusual situation, and if you're not going to have business hours, you're not going to have businesses. Thank you.
That's the only comment I have to make, is to agree with John's point. I can't see how you can expect a business, and even if you say they could eventually apply for conditional use, they're going to have to go through hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of designs and everything else to get to the point to ask. And if the answer is no, then they've, it just cripples the whole idea. So I understand the concern about what Mr. Rudy said about being able to sleep with his windows open, and I get it, and I think that's what they're trying to solve. I think a 10:00 curfew pretty much guarantees there's not going to be any businesses down there.
What kind of direction do we want to get?
I don't know, Amy's right, this feels very schizophrenic.
We all had good intentions with respect to it, and it all started with biddies, and I think probably, as you said, we're schizophrenic, and we need to give staff some direction here, though.
I'm curious, Jenny, from your perspective, with the biddies proposal, we started out, it was one thing, and then my understanding is developer went away, came back with something that was pretty cool, residents were happy with it, it was kind of what everybody thought would be good, and then something happened at ARB. What, I guess I'm trying to understand, because reading minutes, it just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm curious what happened.
I'll try to go back to the recesses of my mind I remember.
Yeah.
I mean, there were various versions of this. The, there was an initial version, again, that nobody seemed real thrilled with in terms of the neighbors or ARB in terms of its scale. They did, the developer did bring back a proposal, as you said, that was closer to, in terms of proximity to the existing building, but had a lot of issues from a code-related standpoint. So obviously, the code wants, in Bridge Street, you're looking at the form, so you're wanting buildings closer to the street, you're wanting that to be oriented a little bit differently, parking so you can't see it. So that middle proposal didn't really address in terms of what the design and character of the code would require, it didn't really meet that. So then there was another version, then, that was more in compliance with code, that that was what was brought forward to ARB, and that was what was subsequently approved by ARB. Because, again, we're trying to balance the guidelines and the code and the residents and the board and everyone looking at all these pieces and parts and trying to make a decision that meets, you know, the requirements as well as the character piece of this, so.
And so this particular case, if we were to adopt this tonight, and which version would have been approved or would have been approvable?
None of them.
None of them would have fit.
Because the building was much too big compared to what the proposal is before you tonight. So, I mean, we're, again, the footprint piece of this is limited, like, an individual building as it's proposed, and this amendment wouldn't be allowed to be larger than 1,800 square feet, that building was much larger. And, again, it still wants the buildings to be closer to the street, but as you're going down the hill, you're getting smaller in height, you're getting shorter, the building's getting shorter, whereas in that proposal that was approved, I mean, it's a two-story, two-and-a-half-story building, depending on where you're measuring it as you're going down, down the alley, so, again, you're getting...
So at the back, you're like four stories, and up at the...
Again, if they were, tried to be as close to two stories at that back end to make sure that they're being sensitive to the neighbors, because there's a lot of concerns about, you're taking up the entire site, you're, the character of the Historic District when you're in the rear of these properties is very open with parking or small accessory structures that, again, making sure that we're not, the existing Bridge Street Code allows that, but this proposal would then try to limit that.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
I think what, it seems like what we're trying to do is codify character, and we're failing because it's hard to do, if not impossible.
I think we're doing it. I think we're codifying the character. We're limiting building, a new building to 1,800 square feet and that height, and then we're saying that we're going to layer on top of it a lot of historic guidelines, you know, historic Dublin guidelines. We're doing it, it's just, I think the question is, what's, what's going to develop then, is anything?
Well, I would agree with you if we were only talking about architectural character, but I think the larger conversation is the character of the district, of the mix of uses, of the, you know, something that would draw people there, that would draw a mix of, you know, professional and restaurant and personal services, and that's what we want. We... We, the funny thing is, is we want it to be what it was, right? It had a grocery store and it had a inn and it had a bar and it had all of the things that it had at one point in time, we want it to have again. And we're trying to figure out how to get from point A to point B. How did we screw it up so bad and how do we unring the bell so that it can exist as it was?
See, I don't think you screwed it up. I think what this, what this law does, and this is from a planner's perspective, it sets the scale to the height, the setbacks, and it's a bunch of architectural stuff. I don't think it gets into the wider issue that you're talking about, but I think it doesn't. It probably stops the kind of problem we had recently where someone came in and wanted to buy a lot and maybe overdevelop it. Then we had a huge hue and cry from the residents who said, we don't want this, this is crazy, you guys are tearing up the district. And I think this is a reflection of that problem in the hopes the city doesn't really have to face that again and again and again. Somebody wants to overdevelop the parcel. And I think in some ways, the way you wrote this thing, it sets up parameters for architectural specification, for setbacks and a bunch of specifics related to that. I think I'm agreeing with you, Chris, that we want to keep the historic district historic and in scale as the houses were. And I think this sort of lays that out in an architectural fashion, doesn't go into all the other stuff that we're interested in, that the historic folks would handle. But I think that's what this thing does. And this, the idea, this probably came from the problems we had from the one applicant who came in and built a rather oversized structure and it was in the newspapers and the residents revolted against it. And I think what you guys tried to do is pin down that problem and resolve it. And I think you tried to do the best job you could. As far as any other aspects of it, I don't think it's incorporated in this document. Now, I do take issue with the idea, if you want to have restaurants, you can't close at 10 o'clock. And if you're trying to get business down there, there's probably going to be a major hindrance and so, you know, there might be a problem with some of this kind of thing. And then that's going to be hashed out with the residents who don't want to hear the dumpsters banging around and being emptied at night and people coming home at 12 o'clock interrupting their sleep. So, I don't know whether that kind of commercial activity happens just on High Street only and we limit it to something like that and try to protect the residents and their interests. But, I mean, otherwise, I think this document's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Excuse me, John, if I could ask you a question. So then, how would that address the dilemma that I think that Amy posed with respect to the L-shaped building? You know, that in a perfect world, you know, some people would like to see redeveloped. Could that practically be redeveloped?
Yeah, I think the L-shaped building is, and I agree with Amy, it's...
I mean, I'm just using that as one example.
No, I mean, it really doesn't fit down there. It's a building, it looks like it was built late and it's a Tudor building in the middle of this sort of 1800s town. And the way it probably would be redeveloped in the future, I hope, is somebody ends up building a facade along the street that reflects the rest of the town and the parking is then moved behind the building. And I think architecturally, that's how some architects are going to come in here and finally resolve that issue and finish that space out and make it look correct for the rest of the village.
Does this code provide for a waiver, Jenny? If somebody came in and said...
Absolutely, yes.
We want that and everybody thinks, yeah, you know, that's, this is much better than what we have, we want to do that, but it totally doesn't fit this code, is there ability to waive the requirement?
Yes, the same, the same rules that apply throughout Bridge Street would be applicable here.
So then it would become a case-by-case, sort of project-by-project issue?
Absolutely, you're looking at the pieces and parts of it, yeah.
So, I mean, I want to go back to what you guys are asking for, which is direction, what do you do next? I would be an advocate for taking a little bit more time with this, knowing that we're like right on the heels of the guidelines. And I just, I don't see that the district is going to be completely obliterated in a matter of four months. So, I would rather be patient and do it right and really work through things than try to push something through that ends up giving us a harder time than what we've intended. That's what I would advocate for and I would love to hear your thoughts from my colleagues.
Well, as of right now, it's set for a second hearing, November 20th. So, whether or not we can, this feels like we're trying to stab Jell-O to the wall with these issues every time we keep failing. You making a motion to table the ordinance?
I guess I would like to make a motion to table the ordinance, not indefinitely, but just to maybe put together another discussion so that we can figure out what makes sense from a timeline perspective, because I don't feel like this is it.
Is a motion, is there a second?
What, this is a first reading, right?
It is a first reading, but I guess what I would say is it is scheduled to come back on November the 20th.
Right.
Instead of waiting until November the 20th to say we're going to put this off until indefinitely, it would seem to me that, I mean, guys, you just want to leave it on November 20th, we can revisit it in two weeks.
We can table in two weeks if you want, if that's what everyone else wants to do.
It's set for a second hearing now. We wouldn't have to do, we'd nothing coming back.
Several people have had, we've had discussions about the timing on the restaurants and such, that it's going to preclude that from occurring. So, and that's one of the issues that I have, is how does that work? How do we attract those kind of businesses we want down there?
We don't, in that part of the world, unless they close really early. But realistically, you know, are they, are they going to, you know, go in? I guess Jay Lou has an idea for something.
Mm-hmm.
I should say Jason Lou, but that being said, I mean, what I hear a lot of questions about the consequences, because we've heard from the residents over and over and over again that they want to preserve their neighborhood character, you know, just like you wouldn't want, you know, a fancy restaurant with a bar built very close to your house. You know, you wouldn't like that, hearing that at night and that, you know, all that, all those things, why we don't build, you know, the swinging hotspot next to the home just doesn't, not good neighbors. So, we've tried to make the residents on South River View and in that vicinity happy. And this does, you heard, you know, proponent testimony, and then, you know, you've heard some property owners push back. And this is the first time we've heard that and the first time we've really discussed the consequences of passing this. So, you know, I guess, I asked a lot of questions and I understand they're not answerable in one night, you know, maybe a memo with all the questions that were asked tonight come back to us and then we figure out, you know, what, if we have direction on November 20th, what that might be. I don't know.
I would just suggest we do something along those lines of staff and probably give you our best response to the things that we've heard here and let us bring that back to you by the 20th and maybe suggest a way ahead if you wanted to table that. I mean, it's no harm, no foul between now and then, it's going to sit there.
It's still not doable on the next meeting, then we'll table it then.
Right, right. But we'll respond with what we've heard tonight and give you some thoughts back and...
Fair enough.
Okay, great.
And I think it would be important for us to, you know, to kind of do a little soul searching and I'd answer the questions for ourselves. We'll get great information from staff, but I think that there's some questions that we must answer for ourselves in the midst of that. And I don't want you to shoulder all of that because you can come back with some more...
I know, we appreciate that.
Ideas that are, you know, well thought out and reflective and researched and all of that. And, you know, if we're still feeling schizophrenic at that point in time, then we've not gained much. So, those two things working in conjunction might have a prayer at making some progress.
Okay, we'll revisit on November the 20th.
Thank you.
Ordinance 80-17, Ann.
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. Jennifer?
This supplement has been prepared by our codifier, American Legal Publishing, and includes local legislation approved by City Council through June 30th, 2017, and state legislation current through May 16th, 2017. We typically approve these updates twice a year to reflect amendments that have been made. A copy of the supplement is available for review in the clerk's office. Staff recommends that council approve ordinance 8017 at the second reading public hearing on November 20th and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on November 20th. Ordinance 81-17?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Infoverity LLC to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Kyle?
Thank you. Good evening, members of city council. Before you tonight is an incentive agreement proposal with Infoverity LLC for the retention and expansion of their corporate headquarters here in Dublin. The company's current office in Dublin will not support their expected growth and they will require additional space. They've been in Dublin since 2011 and are a leading global professional services organization. They provide master data management, product information management, strategy and implementation solutions that help their clients in retail, consumer goods, manufacturing, financial services and healthcare sectors by simplifying and maximizing the value of their information. They're a business that's in one of our strongest and most promising industries of IT and data analytics. The project would result in the retention of 27 employees here in Dublin with the addition of 53 new employees by the end of 2024. They would need to sign a minimum of a seven-year lease within the city of Dublin for the agreement to take effect. The incentive agreement is a five-year, 10% performance incentive on withholdings collected for employees from 2018 to 2022 that is capped at $53,000 for the term of the agreement. In consideration, Infoverity agrees to have a total of 80 employees in Dublin by 2024 and the city expects to net approximately $734,336 over the seven-year term. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from council? All right, we'll revisit that issue on November the 20th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Resolution 78-17, Ann.
Authorizing city manager to enter into a letter of agreement with the City of Columbus related to the FRA Tuttle Crossing Extension Project.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. Paul?
Members of council, in brief, the city of Dublin is the lead agency for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension and Avery Road widening Phase One project and thus is responsible to acquire all necessary right-of-way for the project. The project will require acquisition from several properties within the city of Dublin and seven other properties located within the city of Columbus as listed in the staff report. This resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into a letter agreement as contained within your packet with the city of Columbus detailing the mutual understanding with regard to those acquisitions in Columbus's jurisdiction. Staff recommends approval of this resolution and is glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Chris?
It talks a lot about the city of Columbus wanting us to acquire all of the easements, right-of-ways, and it outlines specifically that we would be the holder of said easements and right-of-ways. Would that give us the opportunity to determine if we owned the easements of where the curb cuts would be and...
Well, we would hold the easements until such time as we work out our boundary discussions with the city of Columbus. Then those that are within their jurisdiction would eventually be transferred to them.
Would we have to or since it was an, at that point, it would be an adjoining parcel to us?
It's typically a project requirement because it is, I mean, the project's being managed through ODOT. So typically, they do require the, you know, easement right-of-way be transferred to that jurisdiction.
I didn't see that language in here that we would have to.
Okay, we can follow up on that and make sure that's included.
Or excluded.
Paul, in the map that you have on this, on this resolution 7817 on the front?
Yes.
I was trying to follow, where is, why is six an affected landowner? Looks like it's going through the middle of a house.
I think the property boundaries are difficult to determine on this, but I believe it does extend up to the north. We could probably give you a better exhibit.
You see how, I mean, where it's pointing, in fact, several other ones on there, it just didn't seem to make sense to me. Can you get a better map for us for next?
Isn't that part of the southern leg of the roundabout at Wilcox?
I believe it is, yes.
That's where that is. And then as you go, I guess, westward, you start looking, you start being able to see the projects or the parcels that are more directly associated with Tuttle Crossing. But this is like a whole project with roundabouts on either end and then the north-south roads that will be...
It's on Wilcox, south of Tuttle.
Yeah, the roads that'll be widened.
For both six and seven.
And even four is that way too.
I think it's important for council to understand the right-of-way and where it is and then the access management and what the plans are for the land on the south side. I mean, I know for 20 years or so, we've been talking about this piece and what would the impact be to the city of building this or not building it? And then, you know, adjacent land uses with, I think, every, everything, or everyone having in mind Sawmill Road and wanting to prevent another Sawmill Road where we have, you know, sort of unfettered, unrestricted development, land use signage, et cetera, on the Columbus side. I mean, not to pick on Columbus, but that's just...
We had that discussion.
Kind of how they roll.
Probably two, three months ago.
And, yeah, and, you know, having Dublin attempting to hold the line on our standards in signage and access, et cetera.
I think if I may, I think the city and councils have always viewed the shifting of Tuttle Crossing more to the north, doing a boundary adjustment, adjustment and so forth, more to the advantage of the city than to be left otherwise.
Right.
And if nothing else, to help get the road extended at some point. I do think that, to the earlier question, there probably will have to be a curb cut of some type along that south side in order to not constitute a take, I would guess, but we can follow up and give you some information on that. Obviously, the one thing I would reiterate too, is we've been very focused on trying to, to, to hold our neighbors, for lack of a better word, accountable to the Hayden Run corridor plan.
Go take a look at Riggins Road. Have you been down there?
Well, I'm talking more specifically about Columbus on Hayden Run, on this particular 4, 3 and 2. I'm not saying everyone else has held true to that. And to that point, I'm glad you brought that up as well, that because of the development that has been occurring there, you know, we're actually, and I think I briefed this at the capital budget, in fact, I know I did, we're really taking a look, a step back and looking at who's contributing to the funding and how much. Costs have gone up, we need to go back and ask for additional funding. And I think it's appropriate that, as I said during the capital budget process, that be looked at a little bit more. Now, there's been great contribution by the region and some by Columbus, which we appreciate, but Dublin's still shouldering the bulk of it, so. But we'll follow back up on the curb cut thing and get you more information.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 79-17?
Support to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the second phase of Insight 2050.
I'll introduce it.
Dan?
Yes, so Morpsy is proposing to undertake a second phase of its Insight 2050 plan. Its focus is to work on the five corridors, major corridors linking downtown Columbus and the suburban communities. So, these are to address the possibility of the 2050, the vision of the 2050 plan, which promotes sort of internal infill versus expansion as well as the mobility and connectivity of these corridors for getting people back and forth, reverse commuting and commuting for jobs and so forth. A great concept to participate in that planning effort. Staff recommends that we do that with this resolution. The MOU is attached, which I would be authorized to sign if you pass this. Our contribution to this is about, is $20,000. I was very clear to Morpsy that that would not show up until our next budget in 2018, that we would not be contributing yet this year. You will see that in the budget document. So, this is kind of, I apologize, a step ahead of the budget process, but they need to get this executed because there's federal dollars, they're trying to leverage this again. So, timing wasn't quite what I had hoped it to be, but we're kind of right there. We recommend passage.
Any questions from council? Ann?
Ms. Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Zoning Commission, and you need a motion to that end? That will be my motion.
Second.
Dan?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amheros Grooms?
Yeah.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Resolution 81-17?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Frost Brown Todd LLC for the provision of legal services.
I'll introduce it. Thanks, Tim. Through a parliamentarian oversight, we have realized this needs to go through our finance committee, so do I have to make a motion to refer that to the finance com... I make a motion to refer that to the finance committee? Fortunately, we're meeting just about every night for the next week with the finance committee, so.
I'll second that.
Plenty of opportunity to address this and put it on the next council agenda.
Did you want to... Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Under the other portion of our agenda, 2018 operating budget overview.
Well, wait no longer. Wait is over.
Woo-hoo!
Good report.
We are proud to present to you this evening the administration's proposed 2018 operating budget for your consideration. Our hope is that through this overview, we will provide council a clear picture of our plan for 2018. Our agenda for this evening is to provide the budget overview by reviewing the factors that influence this budget, the city manager's guidelines in the preparation of this budget, and how the budget supports the city's strategic focus areas. We will then highlight the changes in each component of expenditures with the hopes that tonight's overview, as I indicated earlier, will then allow ample time during the workshops to focus on other areas and in particular, personnel. So, what is the bottom line up front with regards to the 2018 budget? We are proposing a spending plan of nearly $87 million in operating expenditures, which is a 1.8% increase over the 2017 approved operating budget. This budget can be easily broken down into four key areas: salaries, benefits, operating expenditures, and capital expenditures. Operating expenditures, pardon me, personnel costs, so combining salaries and benefits, increased nearly $2 million or 4.1% over 2017, and this was the largest component of the budget. Operating expenditures increased over $633,000, I'm sorry, decreased $633,000 or 1.8%. And capital expenditures increased slightly less than $174,000 or 7.6%. We will discuss in detail each of these components later on in the presentation and in greater detail the personnel aspect on Wednesday. The 2018 operating budget was developed with acknowledgement of the following: first, there is a reduction in revenue anticipated from Nationwide's continued move-out of Dublin, which is expected to conclude by the fourth quarter of 2018, and as we learned in the spring, a reduction from Wendy's. While our revenue estimates take into account new revenue from United Healthcare, we also take into consideration the shifting of jobs that will be occurring with Cardinal Health's consolidation and the departure of Ashland from their campus. And certainly, we will need to be mindful of the loss of revenue from Nokia, which was just announced this past week. As Dana mentioned last year, we are in a transitional phase with the shifting of these employment bases around the city. While we are seeing growth in our existing businesses, which is certainly fantastic news, we are cognizant of this three-to-five-year period where we are likely to see steady increasing, but not as increasing at a rate as we've had experienced in the past in terms of income tax revenues. This budget was prepared with the intent to finalize and implement the numerous planning studies that have been underway, including the West Bridge Street Framework Plan and the Bright Road Area Plan, the third phase of the mobility study, and completing the historic district and Bridge Street District code updates. Each year, the budget is prepared to implement the first year of the approved capital improvement program. As council knows, our CIP and the implementation of those projects truly sets forth the conditions for our future growth by investing in our infrastructure and maintaining our assets. And finally, we continue to emphasize what Dublin is known for: high-quality services, a safe environment for our public, both business and residential, and employees, as well as citizen engagement and involvement. In addition to the influences we just discussed, department and division heads were instructed that the budget should follow our financial policies and guidelines, center around the city's strategic focus areas, and maintain our levels of service. In order to provide these levels of service, staff were instructed to analyze their operating expenditures and seek efficiencies so that we could present to council as close to a 0% increase in expenses as possible. This doesn't mean that services will be reduced. It simply means that departments need to look at their budgets and see if there are methods in which we deliver our services that can be tweaked or provided in a more efficient manager, in a more efficient manner. Dana's direction to the management staff and their preparation of the operating budget was centered around the city's five strategic focus areas: fiscal health, economic vitality, smart customer-focused government, community engagement, and being a safe and resilient community of choice. The city's fiscal health and economic vitality go hand-in-hand. In order to ensure the city's continued financial success, the 2018 operating budget reflects funding to complete the planning studies that I indicated earlier, as well as the Morpsy Corridor Study and the West Innovation District Metro Blazer Plan. Economic development is truly important as it translates into our fiscal health in terms of income tax revenues. Proactive engagement with our businesses, site consultants, developers, and realtors will continue to be the focus of the economic development team in 2018. As I mentioned previously, we will be implementing the first year of the capital improvement program with the focus to have these projects executed on time and on budget. And finally, this budget incorporates funding to support the Smart Cities Initiative. In the capital budget and now in the operating budget, dollars are allocated to ensure that Dublin continues to be a leader in this area. With regard to the smart customer-focused government, we will continue to strive to provide best-in-class services efficiently and cost-effectively. This budget does not reflect any reduction in services or service levels. It includes funding to continue providing refuse and recycling collection to our residents at no cost, with the city's costs increasing $210,000 over last year's contract. This puts the total cost of our refuse program at $2.7 million. As the city has grown and developed, it is essential that we continue to maintain it in a manner that meets the high standards that Dublin is known for. New for 2018 is additional funding for the maintenance of right-of-way, particularly the new public areas within Bridge Park, along Riverside Drive, and the Roundabout, and the fabulous new landscaping that is part of the 27033 interchange. As I previously mentioned, staff will continue evaluating programs and services to determine their relevance and determine if there's a way to more efficiently provide those services. And finally, we couldn't provide these services without our people. We are indeed a service organization. This budget proposes the hiring of seven new full-time employees and funding to implement the recommendations from the Classification Plan Review, which you heard earlier tonight and which we will focus on on Wednesday evening. From a community engagement standpoint, our ongoing goal is to earn and maintain the trust of our residents and businesses by providing an engaging, accessible, and responsive local democracy. In order to help facilitate this, we have included funding for the National Citizens Survey to occur in 2018. Additionally, as we complete our studies mentioned earlier and carry out our mission of providing services to our residents, we will continue to engage our stakeholders early and often in our planning processes. And the safety of our residents and employees is one of our core functions as a government. To that extent, the 2018 budget programs funding for two new police officers. These two new positions were included in the seven that I mentioned earlier. Our community partners at Centero have requested $75,000 in additional funding, bringing their total, if approved by council, to nearly $300,000. These funds are requested so Centero can develop additional services for older adults and their caregivers, as well as for families that have been impacted by the opioid epidemic. As council heard during the CIP process, our K9 will be deployed in 2018, and funding is included in this budget to support this. We are grateful to have offsetting revenue to help with some of those expenses. And like years past, in order to be a safe community, it is essential that our employees have the proper training and equipment, and funding is provided for them to maintain their licenses and certifications, departmental accreditation, and overall leadership development. Now that we have laid out the city manager's focus areas, we will now focus on the budget itself. So as outlined in your budget letter, when we refer to the operating budget, we are traditionally looking at the operating funds that provide the day-to-day services, or better put, anything that's not a debt service, capital, or proprietary fund, such as our water and sewer funds. So these are the funds that encompass our operating budget, both operating revenues and operating expenditures. This year, like other years in the past, we are proposing a budget in which the operating expenditures are budgeted to exceed the operating revenues. You can see those two numbers shown, and I'm sorry, there's clearly an error on that. I believe the operating expenditure should be $85 million, with the operating revenue at $82 million and the expenditures at $85 million for a variance of nearly $4 million. While we are proposing there to be a gap between the revenue and expenditures, what has happened in the past is that has actually not been the case, and this slide demonstrates that. The blue bars represent the projected variance between revenues and expenditures when the budgets going back to 2009 were proposed, and the red bars reflect what actually happened. So that's a function of a couple of things. One, we do not spend every dollar that is appropriated. In fact, in the general fund alone last year, we did not spend about $3.5 million. We also plan for revenues to come in lower than what they actually come in at, so we are conservative in our revenue estimates. Those two things result oftentimes in revenues exceeding our expenditures. When we presented the 2017 operating budget, we articulated a few key points that were reasons for why we thought expenditures were going to exceed revenues. One, there was a land acquisition cost for economic development purposes, and we also had a substantial increase in our income tax refunds that we were going to have to pay out at the beginning of 2017. That contributes to this variance. I will tell you that I still think that that is conservative. That's taking a very conservative approach to our spending throughout the rest of 2017, and I'm hopeful that truly that bar will actually flip to the positive and our revenues will exceed our revenue. Speaking of revenue, in 2018, we are projecting $82 million, which is a 2% increase over the 2017 operating budget. You can see that the largest component is our income tax revenue. We are projecting $86 million in income tax revenue next year. As you know, 75% of that amount gets allocated to the capital or to the general fund, so that amount is $64.5 million and is included in our operating revenues. And then the remaining 25% is allocated to our capital improvements tax fund, and that amount is $21.5 million. Because that it goes to our capital fund, and the capital fund is not considered part of our operating budget, that number is not included in our operating revenues. Just to take a quick look at our income tax revenue, based on where we ended the year in 2016, our original estimates for 2017 had a 5.8% reduction over 2016. This again was based on knowing that we were going to be losing employment from Nationwide and Chase. In fact, through October, we are actually down about 4%. So we revised our estimate to be down, to reflect a 4.8% reduction over 2016's actual numbers. Again, looking forward to 2018, we very systematically went through our calculations, looking at what we bring in from our various businesses. We took into account the reduction from Nationwide that we would expect when they are fully vacated from the city by the end of the fourth quarter in 18. We've taken into account a reduction in Wendy's, but we also have applied an overall increase, which is consistent with what we're seeing in our existing bases, in our existing businesses that are growing. So based on our 2018 estimate of $86 million, it reflects a very slight increase of 0.4% over our 2017 revised estimate. Just to give you a snapshot of where we at, where we are at through October, we've brought in about $73.5 million. Again, we are down about 4%. A lot of that is what we expected, given the departure of businesses from the city. In addition to income tax revenue for 2018, we are projecting to bring in about $17.5 million of funding from other sources, and you can see those sources in front of you. Now, looking at the expenditure side of the equation, same chart that I saw, I showed you before, our operating budget is about $87 million, a 1.8% increase over 2017's operating budget. Now, looking specifically at each one of those components, our salaries make up about $34.5 million of the total operating budget. That number reflects a 3.1% increase over last year or slightly more than $1 million. The reason for that increase is threefold. First, the implementation of the results from the classification study that Homer discussed earlier. The estimated cost to implement that plan is approximately $100,000. Additionally, we are recommending the hiring of seven new full-time employees. The estimated cost of those seven new employees is $428,000. And finally, we have contracted contractual increases that are already in place for our Fraternal Order of Police at 2.75% for 18, our United Steelworker Group at 2%, and funding for the non-union group is programmed at 2% across the board. That doesn't mean that each person will get 2%. It's funding to provide an overall 2%. And then, we are still in negotiations with our dispatch unit, and so funds are programmed in there for those increases as well. The estimated cost of the wage increase portion of the salaries is approximately $528,000. With respect to the benefits, that cost is approximately $15.5 million, which represents a 6.4% increase over 2017. So as you are aware, we are self-insured for our health insurance program, and because we're self-insured, we essentially charge back our departments the cost of single or family insurance based on what the employee elects, and we charge that to the employees' home department. Based simply upon our rates and our experience with claims, we would have seen about a 2% increase in the funding level charged to our departments this year. However, I'm going to skip ahead one slide. Back in 2013 and 2014, we essentially bought down our rates, bought down the funding level that we charged to ourselves for single and family coverage because our fund balance within the self-insurance fund was so high. But we're at a point now where we need to potentially boost up what that fund balance is. So in order to accomplish this, we've included an additional $500,000 that is ultimately charged to the operating funds to help bolster up the fund balance within the self-insurance fund. We continue to watch this every month. The picture that we saw in August looked much different than it looked in October because our claims activity decreased dramatically. So at the end of the day, we may not necessarily need to incorporate that $500,000 funding. So to the extent that we do need to implement it, our rates would show for single coverage about a 14% increase over last year, for family coverage about 7.2%. That would be the upper limit of what we would charge. So I would expect if we continue to have a decent November and December from a claims perspective, that we can scale back those increases. Also incorporated with our benefits calculation is the contributions to the retirement system. We follow Ohio Revised Code as far as what employees contribute and what we are required to contribute as an employer. Now looking at the operating expenditure piece. Operating expenditures make up $34.3 million of the budget. This represents a 1.8% decrease or $633,000 reduction over last year. Operating expenditures can be broken down into three key areas: contractual services, supplies, and other charges and expenditures. Looking specifically at contractual services, of the $34.3 million of operating expenses, contractual services makes up about 16.5%. What we've done on this slide and the next two slides is articulate those items that really account for the increase or decrease in these areas, the notable changes. So within contractual services alone, this year's budget in 2018, we're proposing an 800... $876,000 increase over 2017. And that is made up of additional expenses within our engineering department. There are costs incorporated for storm sewer GIS enhancement, inspection services, a crash tool upgrade that can be utilized with our GIS mapping system, and then a France Road Corridor traffic study. Within our Hotel Motel Tax Fund, there's about $108,000 of additional contractual services, which includes lighting in Kaufman Park, City Hall lighting for the Tree Event and other events, and then Dublin Irish Festival costs, many of which are offset by revenue. Within park operations, as I mentioned earlier, we have a significant number of additional maintenance items this year with Bridge Park, with the 270-33 interchange, so an additional $405,000 is programmed in 2018 for these expenses. And finally, planning. To continue and finalize those studies, $225,000 has been programmed.
If I could point out the increase, could you go back? The increase under park operations, that is relative to, well, that's landscaping. The increase for the maintenance areas, oh, I'm sorry, the interchange area will be, and Bridge Street will be contractual. That will not be new employees, just to make sure you're aware of that.
In the supplies category, it's about $460,000 more than what was proposed last year. Information Technology has about $275,000 in added expenses for funding for hardware and software maintenance fees. And in the communications area within police, there's about $73,000 of additional expenses for a CAD interface. The caveat to this aspect is that because of our billing formula with our partners that we dispatch for, these costs for dispatching are incorporated in that, so we are able to recoup some of those dollars. And then finally, other charges and expenditures, we saw a decrease in this aspect of 1.8% over last year, which is a reduction of $633,000. And that was really generated from three key, or two key areas that were reduced. Our economic development incentives went down almost $1.3 million. That is based on our active economic development incentives that we have in place and commitments that we have for 18. Please recall that the Cardinal Health incentive that we had dropped off because of the replacement agreement that we have to construct that parking lot. And then secondarily, income tax refunds decreased $740,000. As I mentioned at the onset, we did have a bump up in our expenditures last year because of this income tax aspect, and that was just a one-time refund. Also, as I mentioned at the onset, the solid waste contract went up about $227,000, and that is for a one-year contract extension. And then finally, our capital expenditures increased 7.6% over last year, and that is nothing more than what council approved as part of the 2018 through 2022 Capital Improvements Program. There was $414,000 of expenses approved as part of the Events Administration Budget, and that was actually for Arts Council site renovations, our public art maintenance, and equipment replacement, all coming out of the bed tax fund. So those projects were discussed as part of the capital improvement program. So again, this slide just summarizes what we are proposing for 2018. So looking specifically at the impact on this to our general fund balance, at the end of 2017, we are conservatively estimating a fund balance of 72.3%, and we would expect that that fund balance will remain relatively consistent if everything were to happen according to plan in 2018. Would put our ending fund balance at 71.3%, which is still $15.3 million, more than our 50% reserve. At your table this evening are a couple of documents. We have included a copy of this presentation. We've included a copy of the documentation that was provided by Centaro for their increase request of $75,000. And then we've also provided a copy of an agenda for Wednesday's workshop. That will begin at 6 o'clock, and as it outlines, we will focus primarily on the personnel section. As you can see, it's the largest component of our budget. It is the largest area that grew as part of our operating budget. And then we also have a workshop scheduled for a week from tonight, again, beginning at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Angel, may I ask one request? This is wonderful information, but I have one request.
Sure.
On your second-to-last slide before the City of Dublin one, could we add a column on debt?
Sure. Do you want all debt associated with that? I mean, even special assessment, water, sewer, that that is TIF-funded?
So I know that our proposed year-end balance is significantly affected by our bond sale for the 2018 proposed, so we advanced out of the general fund monies that are going to be replaced by the bond sale.
Right.
And so something that would account for the amount of money that is in our balance that is a result of a debt.
Well, our general fund does not pay any debt service, so it's just a temporary advance from the general fund to either a TIF fund or a capital fund until the debt is issued. Recall that the majority of our debt that is income tax-funded is funded through that 60% of the 25% that's in the capital fund. I'm not trying to split hairs, but our general fund does not pay for any debt service.
Right, but it is a difficult number to attain because it's influenced by so many different factors. But I think I'd like to see, you know, the contributions to the general fund that are spent but then replaced by debt. Maybe we can work through a way to come up with a number that would represent what I'm trying to represent.
Okay.
Take a couple stabs at it back and forth this week, maybe.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thanks.
Otherwise, we will see you on Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you, Angel. Staff comments, Dana?
First, just thanks for letting us give that overview. Really appreciate it. I think it's good for the public to get that overview and see what it is we're proposing. Secondly, just want to remind you that the Chamber Annual, what do they call it, the annual luncheon that they have at the recognition luncheon, that's, I can't remember my writing, it's recognition luncheon, December the 8th, and I think I put some information out about that. I guess it's good news to say that the Council of Governments between Dublin, Union County, and Marysville are going to be recognized at the luncheon, so would love if you could come out to that. So just let us know if you'd like to attend. Thanks.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports, is that it, Dana? Committee reports, P&amp;Z, Amy?
I don't have anything.
Administrative Chair, Mike?
But wait, I do have one quick question, I apologize, from P&amp;Z. When is Mr. Fishman going to be sworn in? Is he coming to our meeting?
You have a meeting on Thursday?
We do. Excellent, okay, thank you.
Admin, Mike?
Nothing else.
John, Community Development?
Community Development meeting met October 30th and discussed the redevelopment and treatment of the major road network.
October 30th?
October 30th, what day is it?
Are you sure? Seeing as how it's November.
We met.
Oh, you did meet. Oh, you did.
We met on October 30th. We're just coming up to date. There was a lot of input from the committee, thank you, committee, and it was good input, and I think it was very helpful, had a lot of helpful suggestions. City did a wonderful job sharing their plans for the future. Beautification, we will expect, I guess, some feedback here from the city once they get a chance to digest all the suggestions, and I think we're going to have a much greener and more attractive city, and I think there was a lot of good feedback on the Friends Road Corridor problem, and so, which we had a wide discussion, so we will hear back.
We didn't set a date for our next meeting, did we?
Pardon?
We didn't set a date for our next meeting, did we?
No. We're waiting for the city to come back with their information. So we will pass on any other information when we learn it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike?
Nothing else.
Public Services, Amy? Friendship Village Association, Christina?
Nothing, thank you.
Tim, Morpsy?
Nothing.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing.
U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor Group?
Nothing, yes.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Board of Education, Chris, Christina?
We met on the 25th. Dana did a great job outlining the remaining work to tie in for the fiber network, the balance of the schools that are scheduled to be tied in at this point in time, and had a robust discussion about a few other issues that we will be coming back to you with shortly.
Great, thank you. And I have nothing from Washington Township, and I don't see any of those folks here, so Council on Table, Chris?
Thank you for the parking lot information, the Cardinal Parking Lot information contained in the packet. Appreciate that. Also appreciate the stone wall redesign around the grounds of remembrance. Thank you for that. I think it looks really good. I'm probably partial, but I do. Interesting read about the FlexPass pilot program. Hopefully in our budget, I see you have a budget for that and what our possibilities are. I ran some quick numbers, and it'll be interesting to see how that works out, and if we're able to stay in that budget. There's a lot of risk there when you have a per visit price with a lot of those facilities, so I suppose we'll see how that comes out. My last is a, do we have any updates on where we are with the Dublin Corporate Area Plan? The residents were here and we had discussion about it. Is that on the schedule yet for next steps?
In fact, I exchanged information with Director Pap Sidero today. Deviani is about to post the follow-up information that some of the residents were asking about. I saw an email from them today. I think that you'll see us go back to them tomorrow with that update. I know there was some internal communication going back and forth, and I know we were very close to posting that, and I thought I read today where Deviani said she was going to be posting that in the next day or two, as all that follow-up information was coming together.
With the updates.
Right, with all the updates and all of that. So one of us will email the residents back to make them aware. I just want to make sure of the timing before we commit it.
Great, that's all I have, thank you.
Christina?
I don't really have anything, other than just to remind folks that tomorrow is Election Day. Go out and vote. There are two statewide issues on the ballot, even if you don't necessarily care about an off-cycle election, it's still really important, and good luck to all the candidates out there.
Christina, Mike?
Good luck to the candidates.
Amy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, I learned that there was another accident this weekend at Post in Highland Croix.
There was Saturday afternoon, I saw it.
Okay. And I don't know which agency responded to that, you know, whether it was Union County or whether it was us.
It was us. Or we were, there were two cruisers on the site when I was there.
Okay. My question is, is it within our authority to restrict left turns there?
Offhand, I would not know. I'd have to check that to see. Let me report back to you on that.
Okay.
Apologize, the chief's not here tonight, but our on-site assessors are in town and couldn't be here tonight, but I'll check on that.
Okay. I mean, you know, that's not the entire solution, obviously, but whether that's an interim solution or not, thanks.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes.
All right, John?
Yeah, I just want to, a couple of comments. One of the political candidates received in opposition to his campaign this particular card in the mail, and I found this thing, I was out of the country, and I don't have a dog in this race, as I'm running unopposed, but I just find this kind of thing really below the belt, says supports multi-million-dollar giveaways to large corporations that can't provide returns. I mean, just made up outrageous, silly statements. Voted to spend over $20 million of taxpayer money on useless pedestrian walkways. I mean, this is really low, and, you know, I'm really embarrassed that this is happening in our town. It's sort of the win-at-any-cost attitude, you know. Oppose funding for all four libraries. I watched this person vote for the libraries and for the mental health programs. I mean, it's really sad that we're getting this kind of campaigning. We had a little of this in the last election, a lot of fake news, which was upsetting, and the city was going bankrupt and yada, yada, yada. And to have this kind of information sent out to our homeowners and residents that's totally fictitional is really bad form, and I'm really embarrassed that this is happening in our community. And then on the positive side, I want to say that Dublin scored, if you read the real estate report, Columbus Dispatch, Dublin scored well. Was voted the nation's 17th-best small city, according to new rankings by the financial website Wallet Hub. Princeton, New Jersey was ranked first, and the data was measured, including cost of living, economy, safety, education, health, and quality of life. Dublin, which fared especially well in affordable and economic health, was the highest-ranking city in the state of Ohio. So congratulations to all our residents and to the staff in the city for getting us there. It's good to be number one, even though our football team may not be. So thanks a lot, and everybody get out and vote. Thank you.
Where's John?